Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, August 23, 2022, at 6:00 PM. We'll have an invocation from Pastor Jesse Cano from the Living Word Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by hashtag You Matter and YADA. Good evening.
Good evening. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for watching over our great city, Lake Havasu City. Right now, we just lift up in prayer those whom you appointed to oversee our city. We lift up our mayor, every city council member, and every city leader, as well as their families. Anoint this board, anoint this council, as you did King Solomon, with your wisdom and knowledge. Give them insight, give them guidance, so they can make bold and tough decisions with courage and to be good stewards over your city. We pray for the protection of our watchmen, our police department, our fire department, our EMTs, our first responders. We thank you for blessing our city and for protecting us from the evil one. We ask in faith, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor, and welcome to hashtag You Matter. We have Doug Paling and Steve Arons, and then we also have, for YADA, we have Ricardo. So you each have a few minutes to share about your organization.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to say a few words. My name is Doug Paling. I'm a school psychologist with Lake Havasu Unified School District, but one of the things I'm most proud of is I'm a member of hashtag You Matter, which is a suicide awareness and prevention group in town. We are coming up on our sixth annual Havasu Suicide Awareness and Prevention Walk. It's September 10. We've had some great weather, so sign up. Our mission is to spread awareness and to come up with intervention strategies, prevention strategies in our town. We're currently trying to secure a speaker that we can have for a community event, as well as maybe at the high school. But thank you for letting me speak. Scott Armbruster, he's one of our members as well.
Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Armbruster. I'm also a member of You Matter. I lost a child to suicide almost 10 years ago, and it destroyed me. And then when we got involved with this You Matter group, it changed my life tremendously. So if you can come out and join us on September 10, it would show a lot of support for us that have to survive, that are survivors, I should say, of this tragic situation. You know, I live with it every day, but I don't live with it every day. I have a good life because of what I've earned by doing what I do today as a part of You Matter. Thank you. Now we'll turn it over to YADA.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ricardo Deanda. I am a prevention specialist coordinator, program manager with Arizona Youth Partnership. I'm also a secretary for YADA, which is the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu. We do drug prevention for youth in Lake Havasu City. I'm only going to introduce myself. I'm going to have Yesenia introduce herself, and then we have a youth member to talk about or make our announcements for us. So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Yesenia Chacon. I work for the Mojave County Department of Public Health with the Overdose Data to Action Program. I am the chair of YADA. And yeah, sorry. And to speak about You Matter, we're actually going to have DJ Loki at the walk, so everyone come and walk with us.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a youth representative for, oh, first of all, my name is Daniela, and I'm a youth representative for YADA. If people aren't aware what YADA is, it is a community coalition that works on educating youths, families, and the community about preventing youth substance use. We host yearly events like Hobbies Not Habits and Walk Away From Drugs. This year, Walk Away From Drugs will be hosted on Wednesday, October 26, at the State Beach. Participants are welcome to start lining up for the walk at 4:45 PM, but the walk won't start until 5:00 PM. For anyone that is interested, there are flyers at the back table. It is a free event, and we are super excited to see, hopefully, all of you to advocate for a drug-free community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to both of your organizations for all the great work you do in our community. All right, the next item on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Cook.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
I am here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is where citizens have an opportunity to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. Again, we ask that you address the council directly, so just look towards us and address us on whatever your comments, and keep your comments within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You do not have to sign up to do calls to the public, but we did have several do that. So we'll start in the order in which they signed up, and then we'll open it up to anyone else. So first, we have Cindy Johnson.
Good evening. I wanted to share some information with you. I've been listening to the conversations on both sides, doing some research about the Arizona Pride Tour that's coming here in February. This is what I've learned. So one side is calling the other side, "You're prejudiced, you're hateful, you're bigots." The other side is saying, "Have the event, just leave the kids out of it." The group advertises all ages welcome. On their website, it says some adult content language. It also says that singles will be available to exchange for larger bills, so that you can show your appreciation to the entertainers. And then it says, "No one under 18 will be admitted without being accompanied by a parent." Kids don't need to be accompanied by a parent when going to a kid-appropriate event. Our Aqua Center, Rotary Park, movies, bowling, roller skating, the list goes on. So that tells me that this group realizes that they're not really kid-appropriate, but we're going to put it on the parents. London Bridge Resort says they have the right to have any event they see fit. Legally, yes, I'm sure they do, but why aren't they being responsible and making this an adult-only event? Before every city council meeting, we stand up and say a prayer to God. In Matthew 18:6, God says, "And whoever causes one of these little ones that but leaving me to stumble, it is better that he have a heavy millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea." God doesn't say no, but it's okay if you put it on the parents. So let's recap. We have an event, not really child-appropriate, but we want the kids there anyway. We have a venue that won't step up and be responsible, and we have our city council that prays to God, and I hope listens to God. There's a group called Gays Against Groomers. They just started June of this year, and already there are 170,000 members. This is the gay community speaking out about pride tours and drag queen shows that include children. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jan Boyd.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Jan Boyd. Havasu News on August 13, 2022, conducted an online poll asking, "Should Go Lake Havasu support drag queen shows performing in Lake Havasu City?" In this poll, the majority said no to drag shows by a majority of 64.2%. I believe that should another poll ask, "Should underage children be allowed to attend drag queen shows?" The majority would say no to an even greater percentage. Lake Havasu has a scheduled drag queen show scheduled on February 4. I believe this is the third one, advertising all ages welcome. The majority of Lake Havasu citizens will continue to have a voice heard against children and attendance at drag queen shows, as they are viewed by the majority as adult entertainment, best held in nightclubs or bar settings. I would like to point out that the popular Las Vegas show, Thunder from Down Under, states, "Guest must be at least 18 years or older to attend. Guest 18 to 20 years old must be accompanied by an adult. Under 18 is not allowed. We, the majority of concerned citizens, ask that these same age restrictions and/or policies be applied immediately for all drag queen shows in Lake Havasu City." I want to add for myself and many others that these standards of conduct are a separate issue and are not about the choice to live a LGBTQ lifestyle. It is solely about stopping children and youth attendance to drag queen shows, which the majority of Lake Havasu citizens view as inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Vanderjack.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Tonight, I want to address the city's involvement in the kid-friendly drag show slated for February at the London Bridge Resort. Our bed tax goes to Go Lake Havasu to advertise and encourage tourism, which is where we find the Pride Tour and Drag Show advertised and appearing in our calendar of events. Kudos to Councilwoman Lynn, who gave an excellent suggestion on Speak Out today. Why not remove it from Go Lake Havasu website and take it off the calendar of events? This way, the city will distance itself from the event. My main concern is the children, who may attend free. They encourage the audience to have some small bills available. Why? In similar events around the country, minors are encouraged to place bills on the bodies of these men dressed as women. This is grooming and will violate Arizona State Statute Title 13, Criminal Code 13-1402, which you have in front of you, by the way. The code clearly states indecent exposure to a person who is 15 years of age is a Class 6 felony. Other parts of the code are also committed. Please read the code that's in front of you. This is not a matter of free speech at stake. Here it is a criminal act that I hope our police department will be ready to act upon. There is a group called Gays Against Grooming. They're actually 270,000 members strong right now, and they're speaking out against this extremism. Jamie Mitchell, the CEO of that organization, says, "It's no longer trying to fight for equality. We have achieved that. Now it's fighting for supremacy by trying to bend society to this fringe minority." She also said they're targeting children, and we are against it. She describes these events as hypersexualized, kinky, and not child-appropriate. So why is Lake Havasu so welcoming to this event? Tonight, I'm asking for action. Let's take Councilwoman Lynn's suggestion for removing it from Go Lake Havasu website and calendar, and for Vice Mayor Dolan, who happens to be on the board of the Go Lake Havasu. I know your concern is the 57,000 people, so I'll assure you that this is a majority against this. According to The Herald, 64% said, "We don't even want it in our city at all." So you don't have to worry about catering to the majority. So I'm saying tonight, Councilwoman Lynn, have the courage to put your suggestion up on the agenda, and we will see who will have the courage to second it, and we will see who votes yea or nay. This will reveal where our battle lines are drawn. There is no justification for encouraging this event. You are contributing to the Breaking Estate Statute. Please read the statute in front of you.
All right, the next speaker is Elizabeth Caffey. We're conducting a business meeting right now. Please refrain from applause. Elizabeth Caffey.
Good evening, Council. My name is Elizabeth Caffey, and I'm here with my husband, Chris Caffey, and in behalf of our neighbors who reside on Russell Drive, are here to speak on the new pickleball courts being built at the Dixant Park. We purchased our home on Russell Drive because we fell in love with the beautiful view of the lake from our backyard, as do all our neighbors who reside on Russell Drive. We were under the impression that this was BLM land, and there could be no construction on this land. We now come to find out that this is city property. However, new builds have been popping up, like the pickleball courts and baseball fields, and our Beatlefield views are being taken away. Myself and other neighbors have called or emailed Parks and Rec to bring up our concerns. We only requested that the new pickleball court be the same height of the first set of courts, because they are lower to the ground, so the views would not be obstructed to the extent of the second set built. We followed up with Mike Keen and came to find out that the new courts are being built at the height of the second set. We are here to bring this to your attention, and in hopes that you acknowledge our concerns and put yourself in our position if you had a beautiful view from your backyard and it was slowly being taken away. We hope that you would take into consideration the concerns of the residents that live on Russell Drive, that this is affecting. Thank you. Sorry, I'm nervous.
No, thank you. Yes. The next speaker, Diane Kostamire.
Honorable Mayor Kalshihi and city council members. My name's Diane Kostamire. I've been a resident of Lake Havasu City for over 30 years, and during that time, I've been active in city and community affairs. I am proud to live in Lake Havasu City, which exhibits outstanding patriotism, high standards, and fostering commendable family values. There's a serious matter that will adversely affect our community, its youth, its reputation, if we don't take action now. I therefore respectfully request that our elected city council members act to preserve the moral integrity of our community, and especially our youth. Our current state laws prohibit those less than 18 years of age from going to a bar and drinking, and from access to pornography and sexually adult information in films. I respectfully request that our city representatives initiate a city ordinance prohibiting those under 18 from attending burlesque or drag shows and/or an event using pornographic material. If such a city ordinance is not feasible, I respectfully request that all those same prohibitions be part and parcel of getting a city permit for such events and materials. It's my understanding that we will be having another drag show at one of our local hotels, and parents will be permitted to bring their children with them to see it. Is it true that there will also be vendors providing items and reading information for those present? Is it true that taxpayer dollars from the CVB have been used to promote the event? Many of the residents do not believe this policy would be in the best interests of children under the age of 18, as it could adversely affect their family values, their moral and spiritual teachings, and their social interactions. Please understand, this request is not meant to infringe on any adult's constitutional rights, or to judge any adult's personal entertainment preferences over his or her personal, private life. I've always strived to treat everyone with equal dignity and respect, and have not intruded on their personal lives. By the same token, I believe that all citizens of our community have an obligation to protect the innocence of our youth, and to preserve family moral values, and that you, as our elected representatives, should act to protect the reputation of our community, its high standards, and quality of life for our city and its inhabitants, and especially for our youth. Thank you for your kind attention. We're looking forward to your prudent action on this important matter. Respectfully, here's Diane Kostamire. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. The next speaker, Greg Logan.
Hi, to Ms. Williams. Well, let's make this short and sweet. You have before you the item that you've heard from other people here about this gay drag queen show coming on up. Folks, it's up to you. It's up to this council to decide whether you're going to allow children to go into this or not. I say, "Don't do it." I mean, it's just stupid to allow kids in there. If you want to go to see one of these deviant presentations on your own, go for it. That's the bottom line. The other thing that we have to consider is not one single penny of city funds should go to promote this or any way support. That's all. I mean, it's really a quick choice. And by the way, this isn't going to go away. We're going to be here every week, every time there's council meeting, saying, "Get rid of this." Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there is no permitted event for this event in February. There's no permit required for the event, and no city dollars have been spent on that. So hopefully that clarifies that. Stephen Tumminello.
I think Karen Vanderjack, who is a longtime resident of Lake Havasu City, I believe 45 years, has cited the laws that we need to be concerned about with this drag queen show. And as you know, I represent Sheriff Mack and the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. I'm an executive member of the organization. We recently have aligned ourselves with Catherine Engelbratt and Greg Phillips of 2000 Mules, and we're investigating election fraud. You know, we were hoping to see some new faces on our city council here, and breaking laws is nothing new. As you recall, last year, Greg Beffer, retired police officer, got up on September 22 of 2020 and told the mayor and the council here that a state of emergency was declared when we needed to not have one single COVID case. And he cited the laws that were Title 18, 241, 242. Those are felonies. Miraculously, three days later, the mayor gets up and says, "It looks like the curve has been flattened, and we lifted the mask mandate." But unfortunately, these corporations kept enforcing it, and Karen Vanderjack was threatened with arrest by trying to go into a business without a mask on. We talked to the sheriff about it on August 21 last year, 2021, thinking that the sheriff would come and talk to Chief Doyle about subterfuge. You cannot go out and arrest a person over a mask issue. You can't have people in the store wearing masks and allow them to trespass, but not allow people that don't want to wear a mask for their health reasons, or because they don't want to be muzzled under their rights, under the Constitution. You cannot restrict and practice discrimination. And unfortunately, Sheriff Schuster did not agree with us. The stores, and the reason I'm bringing this up, Mayor Shihi, you said this on the radio today, and we need to clarify this. These private businesses are not private. They're places of public accommodation, and so they have to follow the civil rights laws. And I don't want to see this happen again. Our concern when Karen and I got really upset with the sheriff was that the next thing is, if you don't take the jab, you're not going to be able to buy groceries. We cannot be setting these kind of precedents now, and I don't want to see this happen again. And I'll tell you, we're going to go on the radio, and we're going to address this, and let the people know that businesses cannot do anything they want. They cannot break laws. We've already done so much damage by these decisions made to the children. I don't know if they'll ever recover from the psychological damage that was done during this COVID hoax. We know that that was a bad case of the flu that was weaponized with a campaign of fear and fraud, and I told that to you many times at the Board of Supervisors, as well as the city council. And now the CDC is backing us up and validating everything we told you for two years, and we were looked at like we were conspiracy theorists, when in actuality, we were conspiracy analysts presenting you with conspiracy facts, and it's all being revealed right now.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teresa Burkabyle.
Good evening. This is my first council meeting. I'm new to Lake Havasu. Moved here in December. I moved for the very values that I found here. I did not come to change things, as they are in California. I came here to embrace what you have. I've learned many things, and one of the things I've learned is there's many things going on, of which I've recently become aware, regarding companies, government, many other entities. There's many. I could go on. I wish to retain what I have seen here since I've moved here. That is, the smallness, the quaintness, the conservativeness. These are values I look for now in my life, and therefore I moved here. So regarding, and I know you've heard it already half a dozen times already, I apologize that I'm down on the list. I simply want to say, I don't agree with this show for many reasons. And I'll go a little bit further and say, with regards to the children. I mean, they're already dealing with children in kindergarten and first grade, talking about gender and sexual orientation nonsense. I'm sorry, these children don't even know that there's anybody else in the world besides them yet. They surely don't know what they're feeling inside with regards to what, if anything, they want to be in the future. That's unacceptable. And once, it's a slippery slope. Once we allow this kind of show, then the next thing's going to come, next thing. Historically, it is exactly the way it happens, 100%. So I would please ask not to have this show at all now or in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Robert Fisher.
My name is Robert Fisher. I'd like to second what most of these folks have talked about, that getting into the gay activities is not healthy. When I was a freshman or sophomore in college, I befriended some gay guys. There was two guys that were gay, and started rooming together in the dormitory, and the crowding in the dormitory made us have three to a room. And so they wound up with a young man in there, just barely 18, and what happened to him really was sad. And he wound up flunking out because of what was done to him in the exposure to these two gay guys. I befriended them, because I had a car and they didn't, and so it was something I was able to observe personally. It was not healthy. So my other concern is that in the agenda, there's several items from 8.6 down to 8.10, with the discussion being held, 8.10, after the adoption and approval of the transit thing. What I would like to understand is, why in the world we think we need transit here? How are you going to put a transit system here with the arrangement of all the streets and side streets and so forth? So it just seems nonsensical to try to put a city-funded transit system in this town, and I don't really understand why someone seems to think there's a need for it. So I would like to understand why the agenda puts the discussion after the approval. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I invite you to stay to that item, and we'll have that discussion at that point. That concludes the speakers that have signed up. Would anyone else like to address calls to the public that have not signed up? If so, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Don Wisdom. I take my hat off for a moment. I'm going to put it back on. Time's really going bad. I just heard today about Biden bucks. You can go on YouTube, find out about it. They will eventually have control of all of your money in a crypto form. You won't be using coins or paper. As a matter of fact, I should have wrote down the number of the bill. That's one thing. Oh, I got something good for you. Now, we have control of Sarah Park, right? The rodeo? Well, let's have the drag queens go to the rodeo. It's the same other bullshit they got out there. How about that, huh? I have another question. My favorite is the courthouse, where that's at, and then we have a lawn patch, a macola. Now, there's watering it today, and what the outcome might be on that. Been a while since you approved that. I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hey, you guys are all amazing people. And just so you know, life is a gift. Please remember that. You are all a gift, no matter what. Hi, I'm Bonnie Toy. And I appreciate you guys also being here. And first, most important thing for me to do today is to remind you guys of your promise to look at lowering the tax rate when it comes up for the next budget cycle. Second, I know I've been talked to by a couple of people that I might need to attend a Parks and Rec meeting, but I would like to remind you to please consider lowering the cost of the aquatic center just during summer vacation. I know there might be complications from it somehow, but I am certain you guys are amazing and would be able to work through the complications in order to give children the benefit of enjoying the aquatic center during the summer. The next thing I wanted to bring up is that, I have no idea what that map is over there. However, there's an empty space over here that is usually attended by a Miss Christine who always discusses about protecting our deserts. And I love that she gets up and that she talks because you know, she's one of the 56,000 people who live in Lake Havasu who care about what goes on. And I really do miss her coming and bringing her posters that somehow were asked to be not shown over there. Also, just want to remind, thank everybody that is speaking tonight because each one of us who find the courage to get up and speak is representing the 56,000 people who can't be here. And I thought when I was going to say this, I was going to say that are too busy to be here. But then I realized some of the people who can't be here are working. And it's not that they're too busy and it's not that they don't care about the city, but it's just that they can't be here at this moment. So unless anybody here or who's not here, who watches this later or hears from about it later, tells you that they disagree with what the people here are speaking about, then I would assume that everybody who you are hearing from today represents all 56,000 of the residents in Lake Havasu. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at call to the public? Yeah, please, again, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
All right. Hi, my name is Erin Aiden. I've never done this before, but I'm here. So basically, everybody is hating on this event that's supposed to be happening in February for the drag shows. It's not the world's ending if this show happens. There's a lot of things that happen in our city that nobody's talking about. Like we have swingers conventions at the nautical, raves happen, spring break. And most people are complaining about like children going to the show, but once again, it's up to you to take your child to that. And same thing for like the Renaissance Fair. You take your child to that, they see sword swallowing, fire swallowing, you know, a lot of different things actually, but I know, I don't know. I just, there's just, it doesn't make sense to me because we're all human. And like, basically I'm transgender. I've been transgender for a couple of years now. I'm on hormones. I have a kid. I have a daughter actually, but because I'm transgender and I'm queer, my child is not. Just because she's exposed to me and my partner, she's not, she's just a kid, you know? They're just kids. And everybody here is hateful for something that is not detrimental to harm them other than, I think more detrimental things for kids to see in this town is pretty much on every single street you can go down, you will see F. Biden. I feel like that is way more detrimental and harmful to a child to read about the president on a flag rather than a drag show that's entertainment, that's supposed to be fun. And they put everything on there just, I don't know. But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Evening. Your last speaker talked about.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Yeah, David Leslie. Your last speaker spoke about it's not the end of the world. Well, for a child in the form of years, when they're very young and very impressionable, they could turn that, in my opinion. It could turn the tide in their development. I'm not a psychologist, but it could happen. I believe that. Then I, one more thing. This ARFA, Save America, whatever you got this money, 4.8 million dollars. You were talking about a transit system within our city? Was that the money that would be supplied from that? Is that coming from the 4.8 million dollars that we got from the city? Or from the federal government, I should say? Was that, was that a strings attached that we had to get a transit system here in town? Is that part of like, sort of like the Green New Deal? So people will depend on, on driving on a, on a, on a bus throughout the town? It, to me, it sounds kind of fishy. I'd like to know if that was part of the strings attached to the 4.8 million dollars that we got. At least the mayor, you accepted it. So at some point that needs to be answered. If you do have an answer for that, I'd like to hear it. Is that, is that part of the strings attached?
Yeah, I encourage you to wait to the agenda item for the transit, but we've had a transit system in Lake Havasu City since basically inception. So this is nothing new. We're going to get an update this afternoon and you're more than welcome to participate in that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, would anyone, Mr. Logan, I'm sorry, you just get one opportunity, call to the public. So if you have something during a public hearing, feel free. Yeah, just make your way, yeah, make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Stephen Bemis. I lived here for 23 years. I don't have anything practiced and I'm a little nervous, so it might not be, go as well as everyone else's. I would just like to say, I've lived here for 23 years and one of the previous speakers talked about, there are a lot of things that go on in this town that I personally would consider morally unacceptable in comparison to a drag show. There's people who are barely clothed down the entire lakefront all summer long. Most of the people in this room, I went to the drag show. Most of the people in this room, aside from the city council members and the police officers, are wearing less than what the drag performers wore. Any woman in here that might be wearing pants, that's technically drag. All they do is lip sync words to music and that's the extent of the show. And there were no children there. There might have been underage people with their parents that were 17, 16 years of age, which yes, is considered under majority. They paid. I mean, if you want to talk about percentages, the show, the show was sold out and I believe it's sold out again. So there, there are people that enjoy watching these types of things. RuPaul's Drag Race is one of the highest rated reality programs on TV. The, the amount of pressure and seeming hatred from a lot of the community members seems to be unwarranted to me. There's, just, I mean, just accept people for who they are. It's their, and it's not a gay show. It's just a drag performance show. I think I had more I wanted to say, but I'm running out of words. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Yes. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Lerner. You know, tonight you've been brought back into different things that we've addressed you about. One was Greg Bedford that did point out that you committed two felonies. That was brought back up. Tonight Karen introduced another law that we think you've been violating. Okay? There's two locations I want you guys to think about. That's Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, and also Nuremberg. Okay? The Guantanamo has been executing people for quite some time now. Okay? And I'm going to tell you another crime is crimes against humanity. Nobody, nobody should be doing this to a child. Period. And I'm going to read you the pedophile agenda. Okay? Both Nuremberg is active and so is Guantanamo Bay. It ain't going to be the local city attorney that will address this for you. So I'm going to read the pedophile agenda. Number one, stocked libraries with pedophile grooming books aimed at kids. Number two, promote drag queen storytime in libraries. Number three, promote gender friendly, or excuse me, gender fluidity to children. Number four, introduce porn literacy into our schools. Number five, queer the curriculum by exposing children to adult LGBTQ ideology. Number seven, promote mixed bathrooms in schools. Number eight, soft sentences for pedophiles. Number nine, push to lower the age of consent. Number 10, dismiss and demonize concerned parents who dare to speak out. Remember the crime, crimes against humanity. Children are innocent and free. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Emiliano Torres. I live here in town and I wasn't going to be here for this subject, but I've been listening to everybody speak. I'm 70 years old. I attended a very strict Catholic school. And so strict that we had separate playgrounds for the boys and the girls. And in fourth grade, we had two new students. There was Jimmy Sanchez and his brother Nancy. At least that's what we called him. And he played in the girls' playground. We played in the boys' playground. None of us are damaged. None of us were hurt. Even the nuns accepted what he was or is. So when I hear all this hateful speech, I just wish we could all act like those Catholic school kid, boys and girls in the fourth grade. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city call to the public before we close it and move on to the business meeting? All right. Oh, yes. Yeah.
Over there, so I might be a little jarred. My name is Patricia Shnalsky. I'm here in regards to the show. I have a sort of a rhetorical question. I don't think any of you have, I don't expect you to answer, been to a drag show. I'm pretty sure none of you have been here. There's no nudity in these shows. The people have spanx, pantyhose, makeup, wigs. They have more clothes on than you do in winter in, in Michigan. It's ridiculous to think that the kids are putting money in their clothing. That's not happening. I've been to the drag shows here. I've been to them all over the place. They are a comedy show with people dressed up in costumes. If your child went there and saw this woman dressed and making jokes, they're not sexual joke, it's a joke, it's a comedy show. It's funny. There's a reason why it's very popular with people. There's, they're not doing anything wrong. And a lot of the men and women aren't even gay. It's something they do. They dress up as women or as the opposite sex and do this entertainment show. Most of you probably can sit over there and make your comments because you don't know. You have no idea, you've never been exposed to it and you're ignorant to the whole fact. You will sit there and talk about this drag show as if it's, there's something wrong with it, but then you'll go home and you guys will watch the news and you'll watch inappropriate comedy shows, you'll watch inappropriate TV shows in front of your kids and your grandkids. That's far more damaging than an entertainment show. I wouldn't take my kids to the show just because, I mean, that's, it's not a kid's show. I've been to them and there's young adults there. They're not kids, they're young adults. They already have it in their mind of what they wanted to go if their parents said, hey, do you want to go? And they made an offer to them to go. It's an entertainment factor. It's nothing, they aren't creating anything, they aren't trying to get anyone to do anything. And if you're, if you're a good parent and you're standing there, how is someone going to groom your kid if you're standing right there next to them? It doesn't make any sense. No one's making you go. No one's making you take your kids. Kids are welcome with a parent, not by themselves. I've traveled all over the world, I've seen these shows. The monies are thrown, they're not placed on someone. It's just discrimination to eliminate a drag show. No one's taking, turning off your bingo events because we don't like gambling. Everybody has their own decisions in life and you don't have to go. It's bigotry and I'm, I'm ashamed that Havasu is so closed minded to the fact that there are other kinds of people in the world.
Patricia, Patricia, you, you do need to address the city council.
Okay.
So please, face us.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
But I'm sorry that Havasu is so closed minded that, you know, they aren't open to other things in life than just their normal, everyday life. There are other people in the world and whether you agree with it or not, no one's making you see this, no one's making you go. It's, it's just a show. And it's a private show on top of that. Someone is paying for this. It's just like someone's wedding.
Patricia, to us, please.
All right, I'm sorry. It's just like someone's wedding, if someone had a wedding.
Thank you for your comments. All right, would anyone else like to address the council before we move on to the business meeting?
Ginger Dotty, I wasn't planning on speaking. This is for the children. This is all it's about. Would any of you bring your kids or grandchildren? Alcohol served, men are dressed pervertedly, they might be fully clothed, but they're, it's a perversion. Parker City, our Parker City Council just stopped the drag shows for coming in to the library. So they just passed that and they're not going to even discuss it anymore. So down in Parker, they're not letting the drag show storytime happen. So we're just here, just, there's, it's, it's interesting how we can get labeled as hate and everything and really it's just protecting the children. That's it. Anyone can do what they want to do, but if we're not going to stand up here and protect our children, if we're going to be a city of, of people, and yes, it gets sold out, but it's an event that's advertised and it doesn't mean that the city's going. People are coming in and these children are getting in for free, you guys, free. Where are they going to sit if there's no seating? Where? They're getting in for free. Just, I just, all of us put it, if this was your niece, nephew or child and someone, we don't know if they're parents. We have no idea. How do we know if they're parents? They're coming in with adults and it's a grooming. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, we're going to go ahead and move over to our regular business meeting. Item number six is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is the announce, announcement of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A friendly reminder, the Lake Havasu City Police Department would like to remind the community of an easy to use crisis service A friendly reminder, the Lake Havasu City Police Department would like to remind the community of an easy to use crisis service line called 988. The 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is a free confidential phone line. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That connects individuals in crisis with trained counselors. The service can provide a more discreet level of assistance to people who might maybe experiencing mental health related distress and are not necessarily wanting police assist assistance at their residence. No matter where you live in the United States, you can reach a trained and compassionate crisis counselor who can help by simply calling or texting 988. The intervention service can assist anyone with thoughts of suicide, mental health or substance use or any kind of emotional distress. And the services can also be found on the website of 988lifeline.org. This is a big, big issue for Lake Havasu City, so we encourage those that are in need to utilize the service or reach out otherwise. Please mark your calendars. The Fall Fun Fair is held on Saturday, October 15th this year. And it'll be again at Rotary Community Park. Before the event, the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Department invites all groups and persons interested in hosting a booth at the Fall Fun Fair to attend one of the scheduled committee meetings on Friday, September 1st at either 10:00 AM or 5:30 PM at the Aquatic Center, room 155156. It's of course located at 100 Park Avenue. The Fall Fun Fair is a community fundraiser event benefiting our nonprofits, PTAs, PTOs and service groups. Come out and raise funds, show support, bring awareness about your group or club to the community. And of course, a bright environment that's fun for the, the kids in the community. For additional information or questions, please contact Sarah Ross at 854-0893. And finally, Mayor and councilmembers, we attended the staff. Mayor, councilmembers and staff, we all attended the Tri-City Council Meeting that was held in Bullhead City on August 10th. Mayor Shi was appointed Chair Chairman for the upcoming year. And you presented, Mayor Shi presented a plaque to outgoing Bullhead City Mayor Tom Brady and Kingman Mayor Jen Miles to thank them for the dedicated service and participation to the Tri-City Council. Of course, both have, have decided not to run for council in their respective communities. Mayor Tom Brady served on the Tri-City Council for eight years. And Mayor Jen Miles served on the Tri-City Council for four years. Tri-City Council meetings are held quarterly with each rotating as hosts and the meetings are open to the public. The next meeting will be held in, here in Lake Havasu City and it'll be on October 19th. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen.
Thank you.
All right, item eight on our agenda is our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, which is a Class B Bingo license application for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Aerie, number 4299. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Tom Himnitz has applied for Class B Bingo license for Fraternal Order of Eagles Aerie, number 4299. The Bingo Games will be held five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, located at 1561 Marlboro Drive. This application was reviewed internally and no objections were received. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also here to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams? Or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B Bingo license for Fraternal Order of Eagles Aerie, number 4299 at 1561 Marlboro Drive.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is a Class B Bingo license application for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, number 4299. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, Nancy Rape has applied for a Class B Bingo license for Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, number 4299. The Bingo Games will be held five days a week, Friday through Tuesday, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, located at 1561 Marlboro Drive. This application was reviewed internally and no objections were received. Happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B Bingo license for fraternity orders of Eagles Auxiliary, number 4299 at 1561 Marble, Marble Drive. I should know how to say that. Marble Drive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Campbell. We have a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.3 is adopt ordinance number 22-1292, approving a zoning change for 1509, 1515 and 1519 El Camino Drive, track 2194, block 2, lots 1, 2 and 3, from limited commercial C1 to general commercial C2. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. The subject lots here are lots 1, 2 and 3. Together, they measure just over three quarters of an acre. They're located on El Camino Drive, just east of London Bridge Road. An alley abuts the west side of lot number one and wraps around behind all three subject lots to the end of that block. On lot one, which is the corner lot of the request, the development is developed with a commercial stone and tile sales building with accessory outdoor storage. Lots 2 and 3 of this request are vacant at this point and undeveloped. Here's the tract map for the property. It's, they're within block number 2, within track 2194, which has a parking in common and building areas designated per the recorded tract map. These lots are 215 feet deep with the first 85 feet set aside as building area and the rear 130 feet is parking in common. This rezone request does not modify any of these parking or building areas. Any changes to the parking in common area will require a separate application, submittal and review through the parking in common amendment process. Here's the zoning map. The subject properties and the properties to the east in this block are zone C1, which is limited commercial. And they're developed with a mix of commercial uses, a church and vacant lots. The properties to the south are a mix of C1 and C2 zoning and developed as a hotel, a vacant lot, a restaurant and outdoor storage. The property to the west across the alley is the vacant corner lot abutting London Bridge Road in its own C2. And then finally, the properties to the north across the alley are zone multiple families, residential manufactured home and developed as such. The letter, the applicant's letter of intent asks to amend the zoning from limited commercial C1 to general commercial C2 to facilitate development of future development improvements that may include a warehouse or wholesale facilities along with any other permits, uses permitted in the C2 zoning district. Several lots in the area have been previously rezoned from C1 to C2. In April of 2017, three lots on El Camino Drive were rezoned. And then of August of 2017, three other lots on another portion of El Camino were rezoned. The planning commission heard this request at its July 20th meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven to, six to one. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions? The applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Morris or for the applicant? No, all right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Yeah, I was over in that area and the currently the developed part that's there, they've done a wonderful job redoing the building that's currently existing. So I think some of the adjacent uses will complement what they've already done to an existing building that's been there for many, many years. So I think good things will come and certainly the neighborhood area supports this, this type of a zoning.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1292, approving a zone change for 1509, 1515 and 1519 El Camino Drive, track 2194, block 2, lots 1, 2 and 3, from limited commercial C1 to general commercial C2.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, item 8.4 is a prove amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the Horizontal Collector Well Rehabilitation Project to Jacobs Engineering Group. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's always an honor to come before you. Today or tonight, I'm coming before you to talk about our horizontal collector well and an amendment to our current Engineering Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group for a design portion of this. This project's purpose is to amend an existing agreement that we have here recently after we entered into an original agreement that addressed the well itself and some of the, the branches that go out and wanting to do some rehabilitation that's so sorely needed. And that we've been working hard to get our north well fills up and ready to do so. We had some recent developments with some, a little bit of settling on some of the manifold piping going out that we need to go ahead and look at redesigning that, bringing it from underground above ground as well as looking at our SCADA shelving in there, something that needs to be dealt with. Looking at our, our roof design and such. This project's projected to be approximately four months in terms of design. And as I shared, we're going to be looking at the discharge pipelines, the flow meters, some roof modification items. We have a beautiful big roof on this horizontal collector well, which could suffice. However, whenever it comes to doing some maintenance, removing the pumps, we have to bring a crane in to pick this massive structure up and set it off to the side at quite a cost. And we're wondering if maybe there's something could be done better to facilitate that so that it's not such a chore to remove it. That could be a couple of different things in terms of actual new roof or it could be modifying the current structure. We don't know. We're going to ask Jacobs to look at that and tell us what's the best option to go there. The anticipated design completion is in December of 2022. Just as a reminder, our horizontal collector well is down on our island. It's a beautiful facility. If you're there on the beach, you might not quite recognize what it is. But they've done a great job of, of constructing it in such a way that it really doesn't impose on, onto the scenery there. It's vertical portion of this well is a rehash is 16 feet in diameter. It's 98 feet deep. There are 11 laterals that are installed three feet above the floor and three laterals installed five and a half feet above the floor. And each lateral is 12 inches in diameter and ranges anywhere from 30 to 200 feet deep. This here is a pretty picture. On the left is the actual cross section of the well itself. And then on the right's a plan view. It's kind of a unique well. When it was built here back in the early 2000s, it was the first in Arizona. And it's served this well and it needs some attention. So that would conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions of Mr. Hart for members of the council?
Since he's here, I just want some education. Horizontal well, where does that go to?
The, the well itself, the vertical portion goes 98 feet straight down.
Okay.
And then the reason why it's called a horizontal well is because of the various branches that come out at, at different angles, much like an octopus arm in a sense. So that's where it gets that term.
I love that. Thanks.
Councilmember Lane? Oh, Councilmember Lane?
Just want to clarify those, so people that are listening. Those fingers that come out out there and that's for the last 20 years where all our water has come from in the city. They go out under the lake, not into the lake. So people don't have to worry about getting stuck on one of those things. It's actually under the lake and the water percolates down to them. I've had that question a few times.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, they are actually 95 feet down, so.
95 feet down below the surface.
The limit to the groundwater.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Mr. Mayor, so how are we doing with our other wells at the moment? Are we, you know, it doesn't seem like it's, I mean, four months for, put a plan together and then we got to come back with construction and all that to get the other one up and running. How are we doing with our other wells? Are we okay at capacity and is there a backup plan? Can this, can this well still go online as needed while they're doing this, the engineering, for example?
That's, that's a great question. And in terms of our current well projects there, the north well fill, we're, we're doing quite well. And we are getting, as you know, our well 23, actually a new well is up and running and, and giving us about 1,500 gallons per minute at the moment. When we put in the permanent well, it'll be up to 2,000. So we're going to see an increase there. We've got some good news recently on our pumps that we were waiting for. And it looks like we could have our well 22 up and running by middle of October, which is, would be ahead of the, the current schedule. So we're excited about that. Now, when this well is being rehabbed, to answer your question during construction, no, we will not be able to turn it on. It will be down for approximately three months. However, the current north well is meeting capacity and is, is working quite well. And in fact, we at the moment have the horizontal collector well turned off for the most part. And just use it occasionally as needed, focusing everything to the, the north well fill. And I think it's been a good trial. It's been working well.
And then when, when we did, when we do just do construction on that well, will that be during our lesser time of use? So we are prepared just in case. I'm assuming we're planning that around our low usage time?
We're going to try as best we can. Currently, the projections on our north well is they'll be able to meet capacity and beyond. So it's, it's quite a nice setup.
Perfect. Thanks for the update.
Yes.
Any additional questions or comments for members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Hello. Again, I appreciate everyone in the room. And I think you guys are all a joy. Appreciate you being here, especially all the ones who stay behind after the call to the public because, you know, city changes really matter. Hi, I just had one really weird question. When you were talking about the design of the roofy thing and how it might have to be changed later or you were going to ask Jacobs about adjusting stuff? Is that, I don't understand, is that part of the bid thing?
That's a good question. Yeah, that is actually a part of our design package here. We've had the roof currently on there and, and I would, you can't argue that it's not working. It is very, very heavy. The engineer that designed it did a really good job of making sure it didn't fail. The challenge is that when we do have to access the well, in order to remove it, we have to bring in a crane. And we have to swing it around some of the items that we have there. And it's quite challenging. There is cost involved. So our question is, you know, if we're going to look at how can we improve the current situation? We want to look at the roof and say, is there anything we can, can do better? And, and that might be adding hatches, which if you were to, if you were inside the facility and looked up, you would see a lot of beams that are in the way and it would be a little challenging. Could we redesign a wood structure of some sort that, that would have some, you know, some weight, but not as much to it? Maybe. We just need them to tell us and if we're going to do it, this is a time to, to ask that question during design.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure how the whole, I guess, the whole bidding process goes like. So if you tell the city council a price now, will the price increase or decrease later? And then how would that be addressed?
That's a good question. This price will not increase because it is actually the design portion. And at, at the end of this process, we'll be able to make a determination of do we, is there another way we can go with this? And what does that cost? And that'll be a part of the overall construction package that we'll bid out. So we don't know at the moment if it's going to be included in our construction package or if it's not.
Okay, that sounds so much like the courthouse. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we have to do, we have to design it to know what to bid out.
Construction, two different costs. I, thank you.
Yes.
Did Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember.
No, we're, haven't finished.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the city council on, on this matter? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council.
So once we get this designed, how long will the construction of, of what we need to get done take?
That's a good question. You know, we got several components going on here. We have the current project going on, which is constructing the facilities for the two wells that were drilled, which we're going to see end here, end of October. We have the north well fill improvement project in which we're going to do a couple of more items to the existing wells to make sure they're up and running, which should put them in December. And then we'll be starting this project. Hopefully we'll be able to come to you guys. The estimation right now is three months.
Three months?
Three months.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions for members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I just want to take a couple of minutes, because we go through this so quick so people don't always understand everything that we're doing. This Horizontal Collector Well has, for the last 20 years, been the only water supply for the city. Had that collector well gone down during any of that period of time, we would have been just like the people on the other side of the lake here a couple of months ago where they had no water. So my hats off to the city staff for realizing that there was going to be an issue if we didn't do something and do something really soon. So you started looking for a redundant water source. That's when we did the North Well Field that you, you heard him talk about. Very, very important. We got those wells up and running and actually just in the right amount of time. Because as soon as those wells got up and we were able to start pumping water out of them, we had a failure at the, at the Horizontal Collector Well, and that's why we're barely using it. So now we'll be able to rehab that. And then moving forward, the city of Lake Havasu is in really good shape as far as our water supply goes, because we'll have our regular water supply and then a backup system should our first system go down. So kudos to you guys for all the hard work and the, the forethought of looking at this ahead of time. So, Mr. Knutson, hats off to your staff for this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if you, if there's other comment. Are there any additional comments?
Yeah, please, if you'd like to make a motion.
I move to approve Amendment Number One to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the Horizontal Collector Well Rehabilitation Project to Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. in the amount of 159,694.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. All right, item 8.5 is a ward bid for the Airport Runway Strengthening and Overlay Project. It's FAA Project Runway 14-32 Rehabilitation to Sunland Asphalt and Construction. Ms. Roche.
Okay. The item before you tonight is the award bid for the Runway Strengthening and Overlay Project to Sunland Asphalt and Construction. The project consists of the complete removal and replacement of the 8,000 linear feet by 100 feet wide runway 1432, which you see on this exhibit. Just a little background on the airport at its current location and paving history. The existing runway that you saw on the last slide was built in 1991. A runway extension overlay project was built in 1999 that extended that runway. In 2012, they placed a two-inch rubberized asphalt overlay for a maintenance project. And today, the existing pavement is distressed and experienced raveling and cracking, which we'll show in the next couple of slides. This project has been identified in the Airport Master Plan, CIP, as a short-term project. Design of the runway was awarded last year to CNS Companies and was completed in March. Their subconsultant performed a geotechnical evaluation consisting of 17 boring locations. And after receiving the geotechnical data, CNS recommended to remove and replace full depth asphalt for the entire length of the runway. As you know, new asphalt surfaces typically have a lifespan of approximately 20 years. So you can see the clear that this pavement section has outlived its life. And for today's aircraft that is utilizing the airfield, the geotechnical data supports a new six, six-inch depth surface. Before you, here's a couple of pictures of the raveling of the pavement. Here's a couple more pictures, shows some cracking, shows some loose debris. So the project before you tonight will consist of a complete mill and removal of the existing asphalt, reworking and compacting the existing aggregate-based course, which is, it's an existing base course and it's approximately seven and a half inches deep. They'll rework that, they'll recompact it, and then they'll install the six-inch new asphalt concrete pavement placed in two lifts. Once the concrete is placed, it'll be temporarily striped so they can open the runway. And then after 30 days, permanent striping will be placed. We advertised for bids in April of 2022. Bids were opened on May 11th. We received a total of four bids. The apparent low bidder was Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC out of Phoenix, Arizona. The bid amount was $5,880,000, and the engineer's estimate was considerably higher at $7,383,940. The current schedule, the construction contract is a 60-day contract. However, we have limited the runway closure during construction to 45 days. We have negotiated a starting day with Sunland of May 1st of 2023. This project is funded with 90% funding and FAA grant from the Airport Improvement Program. There is an ADOT matching grant that is in the process, which will be approximately 4.5%. And then the airport fund city match of an additional 4.5%. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. And also, thank you to you and Mr. Anderson, the airport manager, for working so hard about the timeline. I know there was a lot of stakeholder conversations with users of the airport and the FBOs about timing and what the best timing would be. Certainly, it's never a good time to close down a runway for, for any length of time, let alone for a large project like this. But after 31 years, it's time to redo that asphalt. So thank you for your work on, on that front. Are there any questions, comments, or thoughts from members of the council? Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not very familiar with the airport out there, so I'm not sure of all the services that we do out there. But is there any detrimental services that's going to be affected on this 40-day closure? Like, I don't know, mail services? I'm not sure what they, what we do out there.
Yeah, so maybe Damon can speak a little bit more to that. But yes, you know, there's Federal Express, there's, there's doctors, there's emergency services that, that do fly in. They will be notified. We've already had a couple of public meetings, invited the users to those meetings, so they're well aware that the construction is coming up. We, we want to focus on giving them as much notice as possible. That's why the, the schedule's been pushed off to May of next year. And that, that, that was outcome of what the users told us would be the best time for them.
You know, the, the city of Scottsdale recently went through a similar project where they were closed for a similar amount of time for a similar runway project in their area. And there are some staging that some of those logistics companies like FedEx and UPS and the others will do to stage in different areas within the region to still provide the services to their customers, which happen to be our residents. So.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Comet?
Yeah.
I would like to recuse myself from this item due to Sunland Asphalt's current conversations with my family business to assist them with making materials. This is very current, so.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Moses?
You had these public meetings with the FBOs out there and all the different users out there. May was the general consensus for the best time to do it?
Damon did talk.
How much input did they have? Is that what's best for them or is that just what was best for us and the, and the whoever's going to end up doing the work?
What it amounts to, Sonja, what it amounts to is the hottest times of the year is when the less, you know, less activity is going. The hotter it is, the less aircraft can fly and what have you. And just like I said, there's never a good time to do it, but the summer months were definitely the proposed.
That's what I've heard, too.
But then we had the contractors also didn't really want to put their employees in that kind of a heat and environment as well. So they compromised and we kind of came up with this May 1st timeline. And then to your question about the other, you know, aircraft, what have you, that's another reason we wanted to give them such a lengthy time to plan and get all this ahead of, you know, to make, to make arrangements for that. Because there are several doctors and things like that that come in on aircraft, things of that nature. Fortunately, the mail company, UPS and FedEx, they go through this, I guess, enough. And then, you know, we haven't even heard a single complaint from them. They'll just make arrangements elsewhere, probably in Parker or Kingman, one of the two, drive down.
And then I had one more question. I, I've, I've heard many times now just how important the aggregate, you know, the chunk rock on the side of the runways and taxiways, just how important that is to the health, not only the health of the airplanes that are landing there, but the health of the runway itself. Does this bid include that? Or, I mean, because I believe last time we ended up tearing out some of that aggregate and didn't get replaced and, but then we replaced it later on. I just want to make sure we're kind of doing it now and not having to come back later.
And what you mean, like, part of the infield?
Yeah, it's so, all that aggregates on the infield along the sides of the.
Right. We shouldn't affect it at all in this project.
Okay.
I think we've got, we've got it in the plans, another CIP project to finish out the rest of the airport islands with that aggregate rock. There's a few sections that still don't have it.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, and it can create a lot of dust, a lot of fog, things like that, especially with the military aircraft that we have coming in.
Exactly.
And then that's another thing, if that question ever comes up, you know, we've worked real hard. We're able to get, get the approval to allow rotorcraft to continue to operate during the closure of this runway. We're working on an operations plan to use a separate port of the airport for that to come in and do.
So you will continue, try and continue to allow it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have a space for it?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to try to utilize the taxiway Charlie that's over down toward the south side of the field. That's kind of the, we call it a taxiway to nowhere right now, until we get some hanger in the building.
Something's out there, yeah. Okay, thank you, Damon.
And Councilmember Moses, to your point, what Damon and Kathy and the team have done, it sounds like it's really easy, like, oh yeah, we were able to move it to May and we were able to just get rotorcraft. It's been very, very difficult. So we've had to get Senator Sinema's office involved, we've had to get, you can just imagine having the FAA involved and ADOT involved as the major funding partners. And we're paying less than 5% of this total bill from the airport fund. The rest all is coming from, from these other entities. So to bring all of these players on, on board, including the, the FBOs and all of the users out there, it's been no easy feat. So again, thank you so much for.
I'll, I'll echo with those sentiments. I mean, don't, don't envy that position being in the middle of all, all those different entities. So sure, great work.
Any other questions or comments before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Councilman Campbell, what is the cost between concrete and asphalt? I understand that asphalt's really gone up.
Yeah, Mr. Wisdom, you can address the council with the exception of Councilmember Campbell for this particular item because she's recused herself.
Okay.
Yeah, so she's not part of this conversation.
Well, at the condo where I live, we replaced the asphalt with concrete. We, we don't expect any maintenance for another 30 years with the asphalt was constantly recoating it like every three years. It's not a sure thing, it's, it's not a positive. So I don't know if they consider doing a concrete runway.
Yeah, maybe Ms. Roche or, or Mr. Anderson and I could address concrete versus asphalt as, as use for an airport runway.
Yes, it's just quite a bit more costly to have the concrete put in, and they have to do a cost analysis based on the amount of operations that the airport has and different things of that nature to justify that extra expense of putting the concrete in.
Yeah, and the justifications to the FAA who's paying the bill.
Correct.
Right, so.
And, and did you mention to the FAA just how hot it was out here and how concrete might be the better option long run? But you kind of.
They, they are aware, right?
Yeah.
We, we were even hoping for them to come up. They had it planned, kind of fell through, but they were going to come up and do a site visit here just a few weeks back and kind of look at all themselves, but.
And they still invite on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Just come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Oh, you're deceiving.
Good, how you doing?
What's going to happen to the regrind? Do you're taken out, does that get recycled? Or, I think when they did Main Street, if I'm not mistaken, it ended up out on the island. Where's that going?
There is a, a staging area at the airport where that will be stockpiled and then it'll be used again in the future for, for some areas that they're going to fill in and regrade.
Okay, good, thank you.
Name's Alex Roloff, Mayor Council. Just a question, is there any financial impact to the city or its vendors with the airport being out for about 45 days?
There is a, a city portion of approximately 4.5%, 4.5% match, and that comes out of the, the airport fund.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Like to make a motion?
Please.
I move to award the Airport Runway Strengthening and Overlay Project, FAA Project Runway 14-32 Rehabilitation, Contract 500256 to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC in the amount of $5.8 million, $80,000.
I'll sign it.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries with six councilmembers voting yes and one councilmember recusing.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roche. All right, item 8.6, we'll start our transit conversation. So we'll have Adopt Resolution Number 22-3604, adopting the amended Lake Havasu City Complimentary Paratransit Plan. Mr. Cypress?
Tonight, I'm going to do something a little different. We're usually these plans, these required plans that we have before you for viewing, sometimes just go through consent agenda, and today we're going to just kind of do a high-level review of each one. The four plans you have before you for review are an integral part of the FTA process to receive 5307 transit allocations. We've been working on these plans since July 2020 throughout our transit implementation plan. The federal allocations process is required additional detailed information and assurances that one was originally required when we received state grant funding in the past. So there's more to it than receiving state grant funding. These plans all have different conditions and timelines of when they need to be updated, so they're not annually. They have different years in them. The adoption of these four plans provides Lake Havasu City with the ability to receive federal allocations for our transit programs that benefit our residents and the uses of our transit systems. These plans are required before the Federal Transit Administration's certifications and assurances can be completed, signed, and submitted to the FTA, Federal Transit Administration, to receive our allocations. Our certifications and assurances have to be signed and updated every year with the FTA for us to continue to receive funds. The first item is going to be our amended complimentary paratransit plan. Because Lake Havasu City operates a fixed route system, as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, we must provide a complimentary paratransit service to individuals with disabilities. The service must be comparable to the level of service provided to individuals without disabilities who use the fixed route. Complimentary in this, it means it complements a fixed route. It's not, doesn't mean it's free. So it enhances what the fixed route has. So it does run, it's supposed to run the same time as a fixed route. But since we've had Havasu Mobility since 2014, we continue to expand the hours, but right now with the fixed route, we're kind of containing it down due to cost and ridership decrease and increases. Any questions on this paratransit plan?
Are there any questions for members of the council on the paratransit plan? So the, the next four items are just statutory requirements. There was a citizen earlier that asked why, why the order? We've had a transit system or transit entity for many, many years in Lake Havasu City, and so we've always received federal transportation grant dollars and ADOT support for transit facilities. Many of you know, about a year ago, we transferred from our Havasu Mobility Program into this more robust. into this more robust transit system. And the cost to our general fund remained the same. So we're able to enhance the services to our citizens for the same general fund contribution that we were doing otherwise, but, but expand it. So hopefully that clarifies that question for, for the citizens of these next four items. And then the final item, 8.10, we'll talk more about the transit system and where we're at and what it's doing. So are there any questions specific to the paratransit for Mr. Cypress before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Can we maybe just get a, there's a layman terms explanation of how we got here. I know we were operating a transit system up to a certain, certain amount. And we knew there was unused tax dollars. So people like, why are you spending all this money? Well, we were able to go for a grant. Maybe if you could, someone just quickly kind of explain how we, you know, why we did that? And we were using unused funds that were available.
Background on transit, Lake Havasu City since 1986 has provided some form of public transit. Over the years, it's changed. It was a dollar ride service, different names, and ended up becoming a fixed route service in the late 2000s. We were spending funding that probably could have been used for a fixed route. So that's when the city at that time decided to go with Arizona Department of Transportation and have a study done and utilizing the same amount of funds, they decided to start a fixed route. The fixed route ran for numerous years. It had numerous bus stops and numerous buses. Unfortunately, with recession catching up to it in the 08, 09, in 010, we started to lose ridership. They tried to adjust the routes, but the, the really, the big thing, one of the things we identified in, in regoing and looking at the history of transit, since 1986, we identified that the city was made to really not have a fixed route just because of the way the city is designed, because there's too many curves and, and streets and they're not straight blocks, that it wasn't conducive to having a fixed route and capable of sustaining it. So our idea, when we came to our fixed route plan, this newer one, was to kind of limit ourselves on that. 2010 census brought Lake Havasu City over to 50,000 residents. That changed our funding source directly from the Federal Transit Administration. We became eligible to be a direct recipient for the funds that we previously received from Arizona Department of Transportation. Those funds became available to Lake Havasu City in 2013. At that time, the city decided not to go down that path and, and start to pull some of those funds in. But remember at this time, the same time, Hat was starting to shut his doors down. But at that time, council and city manager decided to keep a paratransit piece open, which is where Havasu Mobility became active in 2014. During that time, the transit funds had still been coming in. We get allocations, had been getting allocations every year since 2013. When Jess came aboard and joined the city, he has transit background broad and understood what that funds were. They are federal funds. The issue with that is if we don't take them, they go to other agencies or other cities in the state. So those funds belong to Lake Havasu City. We're not required to take them, but if we don't, they go to the larger metropolitan areas. Havasu is unique in the area of the northern, west northern of Arizona because we're the only ones right now that are receiving these funds. The next closest are down in the valley, all of Phoenix metro area and Flagstaff area. So we're in a small group of recipients of these funding from the Federal Transit Administration. We did have our, in January 18th of 2020, the city council approved and adopted our transit plan. And that transit plan was driven on a year-long study that was facilitated by Transit Division and our Havasu Metropolitan Organization Planning Organization. When we had that plan, when it was adopted in January 2020, we started to go. And then we had, unfortunately, COVID began affecting everything then. But that was transit plan was designed in a way that it was going to be a modern, technology-driven transit opportunity for the city. And one of the pieces, we were not going to go back to having multiple fixed routes in the city. Like I said earlier, this, we found that while the ridership was up for Hat when it was around, when we had all the bus lines, it was actually more widely used when it was more of a dollar ride type system, a non-demand type system. So when we met with MPO and scoped the job and the plan, we decided that because it's an FTA requirement to have a fixed route to receive demand response and paratransit funds, we decided to, to really only use our fixed route as a one-way or circulator, but bring in everybody into the city with a demand response service, which is our direct service. And I'll go over that more in detail with our presentation. So we've only been active for a year, even though the plan started in 2020. Even though we launched in July of 21, we probably, the only thing we've kept going was the switch over from Havasu Mobility to Flex. We're still taking small steps in a positive way. And again, we'll go over that again with my presentation. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question.
Yes.
A couple. First, how big are the, the shuttles or the buses for the?
If, if we could talk about paratransit. So I just, because at 8.10, 8.10, we'll get into like the, the train. We, we got a little off track there with that explanation.
Oh, well, it was in that.
Yeah, so if, if it's specific to paratransit, let's ask away. But I just want to, if you have comments for 8.10, which is the, the transit discussion in its entirety, then we'll have that discussion there. But this is the paratransit plan that's in front of us right now. So if there's.
Then can you tell me what am I voting on?
The acceptance, adopting the amended paratransit plan that is in front of us. So it's in our, our council agenda. It's a document that has.
That talked about.
20 pages and.
Yes.
Yeah, and so if you, if I just wanted, if you have questions, Councilmember Campbell, please ask them. I just wanted to preface that with if it's about the paratransit, let's ask away. Otherwise, if it's about transit as a whole, we'll wait till the item 8.10. So if you have questions, ask Mr. Cypress.
What size are the transit buses for the, the routes, the fixed routes? What size are those? I mean, how many people does it occupy?
They, they occupy, they take 14 passengers plus a driver. So they do not require a commercial driver's license or a passenger endorsement.
Okay, and another question, is there an age limit for any of these? That they can jump on? Do you have to have a parent attended with you? Is there an age limit of the age that children can ride on your fixed route?
The fixed route is nine is the age limit. So then we, we usually require parents to be with them at that point, so.
Anything over the age of nine?
Yes. And that's on the, that's on the public transit, yes.
Thank you.
Right.
Any additional questions of Mr. Cypress?
Yes.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah. Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Robert Fisher. So I'm just curious, are those buses air-conditioned? And are homeless people going to be allowed to ride them all day so they can stay in a cool place?
Yeah, Mr. Cypress?
They are air-conditioned and anybody can ride them as long as they're paying, they're fair. And we do have rules and regulations that are available on our transit website.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Cypress?
Maybe take a step back and just talk about the, the three services of transit that, that the city offers. So paratransit, what is that? That is those that need, need help. They're, they're in a wheelchair, they're disabled. They need to get to their doctor's appointments. They need to get to maybe the work environment or the grocery store. So we're talking the paratransit, which is, which is our, our flex route, used to be Havasu Mobility. So that, that is a transit service that provides those that are disabled, those that have ADA capabilities. A lot of those are veterans within our community. So we're getting them from point A to, to point B. So that's, that's paratransit. And then we have another service that's called Direct. And it's kind of an element, a little bit about peeking back through the Uber app. So if you want to get picked up at one location within the town, we'll have a, a city, a city employee in either a four-door sedan or a small minivan that'll pick you up and take you from one, one point to another point for either $3 or $5 to, depending on where you're, you're looking at. And then the more traditional transit service that, that we provide in Havasu, in all honesty, the, the least successful of the three legs. But we are required to provide a fixed route system and, and Lake Havasu City, if we want to continue to provide paratransit, transit services for our, for the folks that needed and, and then through the, the Direct service as well, too. The fixed route is that, that traditional, that we have a bus stop. At 11:17, the bus is going to be there. It's going to, it's going to stop, it's going to pick you up and it's going to drop you off at the next stop. So Mr. Cypress, as you alluded to, back in 2010 and prior, we had 90-some stops within, within the city. So we're driving around buses at stops and stopping at predetermined times on a fixed route system, heavily inefficient. And that's not something that we're trying to, to duplicate. But I just want to kind of put that out there in terms of the, the, the three levels of service that we happen to have. So paratransit, the Direct route, and then a fixed-based route service that's more the traditional that, that, that we've seen and experienced in Havasu in previous years. Hopefully that was helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
So the fixed routes will not allow paratransit as well? I mean, do they have the access for that? Okay, thank you.
All right, would anyone else, Ms. Toy?
Oh, yes, thank you. I had a question when I was reading the pamphlet offline this afternoon. There was one page, on page 28, that stopped mid-sentence and I did not understand what the rest of the sentence was supposed to say. And I don't remember which booklet it was. I'm really sorry, because I read, I think.
Yeah, that'll be the next agenda item.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that'll be the next one. So we'll, we're going to address it on that one.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick question about the age nine limit. Was that age two, actually? The question about the age nine limit was that like, so children under nine cannot be on the bus by themselves or children over? So if a child is over nine, then they can be on the bus by themselves?
Yes.
And then the other question was, you're saying this is an amended item? And I was wondering, what the heck was amended?
Well, we're required to update the plans. And because this, we started a new fixed route, we're required to update our complimentary paratransit plan. So we had a paratransit plan when we had Havasu Mobility, but that was state-funded. Because now we're federally funded, we have to update our paratransit plan with the rules and regulations for the federal government. So it's very similar. It just said we have to update it. It's part of the pieces of the FTA requirements.
Okay, because when I was reading it, I didn't understand what the.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-3604, adopting the amended Lake Havasu City complimentary paratransit plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.7 is adopt resolution number 22-3605, adopting the amended Lake Havasu City Transit Title VI Plan and Implementation Plan. Mr. Cypress?
Thank you, Mayor. This document is similar as the previous. It's an updated Title VI Plan. This is required of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, stating no persons in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Lake Havasu City Transit has amended this Title VI Plan to include the fixed route requirements. Similar to the previous one, now that we have a federal-funded fixed route, we had to update the verbiage, the language in this one to show the difference between the state and the federal pieces. So it has more federal words in it than it does state. Very similar, but it, instead of ADOT, it's saying the FTA. Any questions?
Yeah, and so to Ms. Toy's question earlier, on page 28 of the plan, under the distribution of transit amenities, the, the last sentence seems to be missing either the final thought or, if we could just get that addressed on what that might look like.
I'm sorry, am I wrong?
It's on page 28 of the plan, under distribution of transit amenities, the very last sentence.
Okay.
On page 28, it just reads, these locations were based on, it talks about the transit amenities. The locations are based on demographic data and.
These locations are based on demographic data and past historical data that we see from Havasu Area Transit and where their bus stops were located. So we looked at similar locations and we did our, we actually have a program that we can search actual demographics down to like the square foot. And then it's kind of how we actually decided how to.
Patrick, I think if you look at the distribution of, Mayor, if I can?
Yeah, please.
Patrick, if you look at the, the third headline on, on, or bullet on page 28, distribution of transit amenities. If you read the very last two words in that sentence, on that paragraph, it says data and.
Yeah.
So we're, we're missing some words there, yeah. So we can update that before maybe.
I'll update that before we get it, okay.
So, so will that finish the plan that we would adopt tonight? If, if that's the will of the council, should finish the sentence, demographic data and historical data, period?
Yes.
Okay, so councilmembers, if that, if one of you are willing to make a motion, that would be needed to, to finish that document in its entirety. Are there any additional questions for member, or for members of the council for Mr. Cypress? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-3605, adopting the amended Lake Havasu City Transit Title VI Plan and Implementation Program with the addition, on page 28, the third section, Distribution of Transit Amenities. The last sentence says, these locations were based on demographic data and, and put the words in there, historical data.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.8 is approved Lake Havasu City Transit Asset Management Plan. Mr. Cypress?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is a new plan. It's actually called, we call it the TAM Plan, but it's a Transit Asset Management Plan. This is a requirement by the FTA and has been out since 2018, but they're pushing this now for completion for all agencies in Arizona. All transit agencies that own, operate or manage capital assets used in the provision of public transportation and receive federal financial assistance under 49 U.S.C., Chapter 53, either as recipients or sub-receipients, must develop the TAM Plan. A TAM Plan is, is a tool that will aid transport providers in assessing the current condition of its capital assets, determine what the condition and performance of its assets should be, deciding how to best balance and prioritize reasonably anticipated funds towards improving asset condition and achieving a sufficient level of performance within those means. What this means is we've got to make sure that our vehicles are in a state of good repair. And so we basically track them from the day we purchase them and we check depreciation and then we check mileage on them. And different than having vehicles from ADOT grants is ADOT managed those. In our situation now, because we're a direct recipient, we manage them under the federal guidelines and have to follow up with the FTA on them.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Cypress, for members of the council?
Just for clarification, how many vehicles do you have in your fleet?
We have nine new ones and two older ones. But so 11, so 11 total, all different kinds and sizes. We have three buses. We have, and the buses are all, we have a 2021 Ford that holds 15 people, including the driver. We have a 2020 Chevy that holds 15 with. We have a twenty-twenty Chevy, um, that holds fifteen with the driver, and that's ADA accessible. It does not have a lift, because we're getting away from lifts. It's a low-floor kneeling bus, so it's on a smaller platform than a big bus, and it's gasoline, so it's more economical and can get around town. And we just received a, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, Ford fifteen-passenger bus that's a kneeling bus as well, that uses, uh, low floor rather than a lift to get eighty-eight, uh, riders in there. And both, those vehicles are actually, can hold up to two eighty-eight wheelchair passengers at the same time. We have a twenty-fifteen Ford, uh, Transit van that was originally bought in, uh, twenty fifteen, and that was, uh, has a rear hydraulic lift. That's kind of the workhorse for us, because, um, that's the only thing, when we have, uh, kind of wider, larger chairs, we have to use that hydraulic lift to get them, to get it up. So we are looking for a replacement for that in the next couple, couple of years. We have two, um, Dodge Caravans, uh, for, those were brought over from Havasu Mobility, and one's a twenty-seventeen, one's a twenty-nineteen. Those, uh, have a ramp in them that could hold one wheelchair and two passengers or four passengers with no wheelchair. Um, so one's a twenty-sixteen, one's a twenty-nineteen. We have, um, the three Dodge Pro Masters, uh, twenty-twenty-ones, and those Dodge Pro Masters are made, uh, by, um, used to be a provider of, uh, Jaco Motorhomes. They were made by them and Forest River, that are the same people. Um, so we have found that these were good, they're compatible, they're big square vans, you probably see them driving around town. Um, great, but we got the first year, so they revamped the models. Um, those all have great air conditioning in them. Uh, that was one of the things we had ordered when we special ordered our vehicles. We had to make sure that we had large-capacity air conditionings in all our vehicles, just because right now during this time of the year, you know, when you're having, open the doors, you know, a big giant door, you gotta try to cool it down as quickly as possible. We also have a Ford, um, what is it? Edge, sorry. We looked at these Ford Edges early on, and, um, we thought they would be a good fit for the micro-transit, which is direct. Uh, we actually had, uh, when we ordered them, we ended up getting, uh, twenty-twenty-one, which is a complete redesign of them, and with that redesign, it was a smaller interior vehicle. So, uh, we use those as needed, if, as a backup, but they don't can hold two people at a time, so, um, so I think we're going to just keep those and use them, but we just learned that, you know, just because you order one model year, and that started happening already in that year of COVID. So they ended up canceling those model years and coming out with twenty-ones, so.
And how many drivers do you have? You're doing so good, I'm gonna just keep going.
Right. Well, we're actually, we have, um, nine drivers, that includes our dispatchers, a backup. And we're actually, we just hired three more part-time drivers, so that's gonna bring us up to where we need to be. So, uh, we do pretty good as far as adjusting our usage, because we try to, uh, manage the, the need. Uh, so we do have some pockets we're kind of looking at to address, uh, once we get our other drivers back on, back on staff and fully trained.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Right now, how many buses do we have on the fixed route that we have right now? Just one?
Yeah, currently we do not, yeah, we're not running our fixed route right now, because we're planning for our, our second pilot. Uh, we have one bus, and per FTA regulations, we have a backup. Um, so down the road, we'll probably start using that when we have either a backup or another route that we want to test out. Um, so we, we have to have a full backup for any one of our vehicles we have, uh, in our fleet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address, uh, the council on the Transit Asset Management Plan? Yeah, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
That's Robert Fisher again. Um, I moved here from a community that had a lot of transit, um, objectives and aspirations, and for the most part, the cost of those transportation, of the bus lines and so forth, was so high that they could have bought a car for everybody that rode the bus. And they had a railroad, um, s- um, ro- line, and it, they charged about four dollars and fifty cents to ride the railroad, but the cost was thirty-eight dollars per passenger. So I don't know what your load factors are on these buses, but it would be interesting to understand the cost benefit of, or the cost to the, to the city per rider for each one of these plans that you've got going. Uh, it just, I, I can't say that I've ever seen one of these buses around, and I've been here for four years, so I, I don't know, I can't really imagine how you would put a fixed route in a, in a, a bus service here at all. Uh, taxi service seems like it would be the best thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we use the word bus, but that's a, a loose term. It's really a van. It's, uh, fourteen passengers, and we'll get a little bit more in-depth for item, uh, eight point one zero about the plan, uh, on what that looks like, but they're fourteen passenger, but the primary source of use right now is similar to, uh, a taxi service or, uh, a, a direct route. So we'll talk a little bit about that more in a, in a future agenda item. Any other, uh, citizens like to address the council on this item? Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Michelle Young. I am a former and current Transit City employee.
I'm sorry, did you say former and current?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, there is a huge need for transit in our city. I can't express that need. I, I have pictures here, if you want it, of a gentleman and his family. This is his only means to get around. Um, car broke down. Uh, another gentleman who is blacking out, crashed his car, they took his license, you know? Um, and these are people, just like you and I, trying to get to work, trying to get out of the house. Our ridership used to be primarily elderly. Um, I don't see as, as many elderly as I used to, but it's catching on. People are very glad to have us back. I'm, I can't express enough how important this is, um, to the people of the community. I am a little disappointed. I had several people who were going to come here tonight. Part of the reason that they, some of them can't get here is...
You didn't drive them.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're done at five. Um, I would like to see the hours extended back to where they were. We've got a lot of people who are getting late to work as our, uh, students have, um, started back up to school, you know? We'd like to get them there. For, for the public that doesn't understand the need for transportation, I, you know, ask me questions. I, I'm open to talking to anybody. I drove for transit twenty years ago, um, and I'm back. I'm glad to be back, and I'm glad to be here to help out the community. There is an effective versus an efficient problem that I am seeing, but I'm hoping as it gets started and starts rolling that, uh, those problems will work itself out. Um, I plan on being, this is the first time I've ever been to a city council meeting. Um, clearly, there's a huge need for the community to be here, and myself as well, so you'll probably be seeing more of me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, welcome. All right, would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
I'm, uh, Robert Hopkins, and we own, uh, Day and Night Shuttle Company, uh, in the Lake, Lake Havasu City. We've been in business for about, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. We run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter, and we take everybody to work, school, everywhere, all day long, all night long. When they did the, uh, study for the transit, the wife and I, we went to every one of those meetings, and we gave all of our input on how to do it, and they didn't really like our suggestions on how to do it. Um, the fixed bus route does not work in this town. You have to go to everybody's house and pick them up. And there's a lot of customer service, because people want to sit in their house. You have to call the customer out all the time, continuously. Um, I don't know what they're really doing with all the money, but if that money was allocated to say like my shuttle company, I could move this town, I could move Kingman, and I could move Bullhead everywhere in their towns with how much money this city gets. And, I mean, we used to run a hundred and fifty calls every day in a twelve-hour period, and then another hundred calls at night, so that's two-hundred-and-fifty calls with just maybe five vehicles. It's, it's all about dispatching and, and just getting out there, and you gotta do it. Uh, but the fixed bus route does not, is not gonna work. And, uh, I mean, from seeing it, needs a lot of help. And I mean, I'm, I'm here to help. I, I've tried to help earlier, but, and we, we've tried to, uh, uh, go see Patrick a few times, but it's like they never would give us appointment to go talk to him or any of, anything, so, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, Robert, for your, for your comments, and thank you for the service that you provide to our, our community. Uh, we have to do the fixed route, uh, system in order to get a grant funding, so we're trying to find the most equitable way to do that, but I think that conversation will come a little bit more in our next agenda, agenda item as well. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Mayor, council, thank you. Um, my name's Mr. Chermensky. What I have a question is, when all is said and done, what is going to be the, um, taxes to the Havasu, uh, people here? Is there, I mean, is our, are the taxes gonna be going up?
Yeah, I can, I'll take that question. Uh, so the, uh, what we've done here, the transit's already been implemented as is. Uh, we've taken advantage of, of grant dollars that are available to us as citizens of, of, uh, um, Lake Havasu City, that if we would not have otherwise used, they would be reallocated to other cities, as Mr. Cypress said, such as Phoenix, uh, some of the other communities in the valley. Uh, there is no additional, uh, impact to our general fund from what we were doing with Havasu Mobility to what we're doing now with the three-tiered, uh, transit system. The only difference is, is that we're required to have some sort of fixed route system, and so, uh, we'll, we'll learn a little bit more about that in item eight point one zero. Uh, we tried a pilot program in the downtown corridor, uh, that, uh, ended, uh, early this summer, and now looking at a pilot program to go from, uh, center of town over to the shops, Walmart, uh, those types of things to qualify for that position. But there's no additional cost to the general fund whatsoever, uh, since we converted over a year ago from the mobility program to, uh, the current transit system in a three-tiered fashion that we're talking about this evening.
Okay. Another question is, I, I agree with the gentleman that was just up here. Uh, we've had dial-a-ride and taxis and everything here in the city that's doing just fine and dandy, and I don't agree with this new transit system coming in, because it's gonna do nothing but cause accidents. Uh, it'll cause chaos in our city. I just don't agree with it. I think we're, we can do just fine and dandy with what we've got here. This is a small city. We don't need to make it Orange County or Los Angeles.
Yeah, we're talking about one bus stop from downtown to Walmart. One bus stop is what, what the discussion is.
Right.
So we're, we're not, we're not talking about LA at all, and, uh, no additional, uh, cost to the general fund whatsoever.
Do they, excuse me, but do they run twenty-four hours a night, a day?
No. No, they don't.
That's a problem.
Yes. But they, they would run it, uh, key times that the citizens that need it the most have access to it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
I was just curious, was this question regarding the, um...
Uh, Ms. Toy, if you could get to the microphone, so those at home could hear your question?
Was this, um, were the questions that they just asked regarding this?
The Transit, uh, Asset Management Plan?
Yes.
No, that's what we're talking about right now, is the Transit, uh, Asset Management Plan.
So that, with the questions that were just asked had nothing to do with the Asset Management Plan, correct?
Except we'll use those assets to maneuver transit in the...
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, because when I wanted to ask my question, I wanted to make sure I was asking at the right time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve Lake Havasu City Transit Asset Management Plan.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item, uh, eight point nine is approved the Lake Havasu City Transit Public Transit Agency Safety Plan. This will be the final of our plans before we move into the discussion regarding, uh, the Lake Havasu City Transit. Mr. Cypress?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, um, this is our final, uh, piece of these plans for this year. Um, this is our Public Transit Agency Safety Plan. This is a requirement, um, from the federal government, uh, going forward from twenty-eighteen on. Uh, this means that, uh, they want to ensure that safety protocols are being followed in transit agencies from our size all the way up to the big, big metro areas. So even though, you know, we're small, we still have to follow the same rules and guidelines as bigger metropolitans, but just at a different level. Um, on July nineteenth, twenty-eighteen, FTA published the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, or the P-TASP, final rule, which requires certain operators of public transportation systems that receive federal funds under FTA's Urbanized Area Formula Grants to develop safety plans that include the processes and procedures to implement Safety Management Systems, SMS. This rule applies to Lake Havasu City Transit. Since we now operate public transit, we are required to develop this plan as a requirement of the Federal Transit Administration. This plan is updated annually, um, if, you know, anything that changes throughout the year. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cypress. Are there any questions for members of the council, for Mr. Cypress? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Uh, we did have an Alfred, uh, Del Ros- Del Rosa that signed up for this item.
Yes.
Did you want to speak on this item?
I thought it was the last one.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll hold this to item eight point one zero. Thank you. Uh, yeah, please, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Uh, for those of you that are coming up multiple times, the reason we say that is you can go right to our agenda on the website, to this item, and so those that are just tuning in for this one item, uh, it might not have been introduced to you yet.
That's Robert Fisher again. Uh, to Robert's point about safety on the, on the routes that you have here, um, having just recently returned from a metropolitan area that had a whole bunch of buses, uh, are you, is your safety plan include having the bus stops move out of traffic so that we don't block up a lane of traffic where you have a bus stop, and then as Robert alluded to, potentially creating accidents there? Uh, it, the buses jam up traffic when they go down the street and make these stops and causes all kinds of chaos on the flow of traffic. So I was wondering if your safety plan includes, uh, bus stops where you have a place for them to pull out of the traffic and get out of the way of people going to work and so forth? So in general, my experience with the buses is it took me longer to walk to a bus stop than it did to drive to work, so it wasn't really practical to, to utilize, and especially if it rained and that sort of thing, and, and in the hot sun here, that would be even worse. So does your safety plan include, uh, bus stops to get the buses out of traffic? That's my question.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, Mr. Cypress?
Uh, thank you. Um, the, because we're still in the early stages of the fixed route, uh, we have identified, uh, preliminary identified bus stops, uh, we haven't actually put any bus stops in, we just put, uh, temporary signs. Um, unfortunately, the city wasn't designed for actual bus stops, so where we put them, it's, uh, low-traffic areas, we didn't put, we looked at McCulloch, we didn't have any room in there, Swanson, so we pulled them on side streets that had plenty of room for traffic to get around wider streets. Um, going forward, depending on what the requirement is... Um, going forward, depending on what the requirement is and what the need is, um, it's in the plan. I mean, if we need to, we can address it. Um, if, you know, it requires, uh, a turnout lane be cut because of traffic, then yeah, we would put that in a plan. In our, we have a five-year TIP, uh, Transit Improvement Plan, and that would be a type of item that we'd put on that. But it would definitely be planned ahead, multiple years ahead of time before we even get to that point. So that is part of our safety plan.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? Seeing number, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve Lake Havasu City Transit Public Transit Agency Safety Plan.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, and our final, uh, public hearing is item eight point one zero, Discussion and Presentation Regarding the Lake Havasu City Transit System. Uh, Mr. Cypress? And, uh, we also should introduce Ms. Buckley, who is, uh, joining us as well that works, uh, in transit, so, uh, good evening to both of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, what we're gonna do is kind of just do an overview of transit, um, of since we started and what is producing, and like I, um, uh, noted earlier that we are still in the early stages, we did start in July of twenty-one. Um, Flex is our first item that we'll talk about. Flex did take the place of Havasu Mobility, so it was, uh, it was important to ensure the transition would be smooth as possible for, um, for our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens. What we did before we launched, we actually, um, notified them at least a month ahead, and we provided free rides and ride training to our Havasu Mobility riders, so they weren't, uh, feeling like they have something brand new. It was the same drivers, uh, newer vehicles for the most part, um, same service, but, uh, more of an expanded, uh, type service. Um, one of the new things we went with our new transit plan is we decided to go cashless fares on all of our services. Uh, that might be something that you'd look at for a larger community, but we felt that we, we were going to get this technology-driven system here. We had to bring, uh, as many tools to help us, uh, be successful for the next twenty, thirty years and be able to grow with it. Uh, cashless fares, um, take, you know, are a great time saver and efficient. Uh, we brought it in during COVID as well because of, uh, sanitation issues. Uh, we have it in all of our, uh, transit, uh, services right now, and we did, um, partner, uh, with our county department and to get this system set up, and we did, uh, uh, provide education and walkthrough to our, uh, previous Havasu Mobility and future riders on how this cashless system works. Uh, fare for a Flex rider is three dollars per customer, uh, each way within the city limits, and these riders are mainly, uh, seniors, disabled, and veterans. Our vehicles are ADA-equipped, all of our drivers are, uh, nationally and state ADA-certified, uh, to, uh, provide safe, uh, boarding and deboarding and procurement of wheelchairs or mobility devices in all the vehicles. Um, like I said earlier, this service, uh, is supposed to run concurrent with our fixed route to Bridge. Uh, we have, uh, expanded it from time to time to cover extra hours as needed. Because of, uh, reduction in our permanent ridership, we've had days that we've actually reduced our hours, and, um, when we don't have riders, we just don't have the vehicles driving around for efficiency. We currently have seventy-two active customers. Um, just to give you an idea, prior to COVID, we had about two hundred and fifty. So, um, we're gaining more back, we see a lot of customers coming back, uh, mainly, uh, new residents coming into town that need some type of para-transit, uh, help. Uh, Flex has provided twenty-eight-hundred-fifty-two rides from July twenty-twenty-one, when we started, to June of twenty-two. Uh, we average right now about two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty rides a month. Our next, uh, top, our next service is called Direct, and it's a demand-response service, and this is open to everybody in the community. This is, uh, what we refer to sometimes as micro-transit. Um, Direct was the second public transit service and began service on September seventeenth. Um, we, like I stated earlier, we found that through research, uh, data mining, that, uh, a dial-a-ride system was the best fit for the city and still is. Except now, we use technology rather than having them call to the dispatcher to, you know, to get a ride, and then that would mean the dispatcher would have to radio each one of the drivers that were out in the field and tell them to go pick up somebody. So that meant at one time, we would probably have eight or ten, uh, service drivers or vans driving back and forth across the community every day. Um, at one point, um, uh, that demand-response service in the early days, uh, peaked at a hundred and sixty thousand rides a year. So, um, that demand is still there, we just have to get it back. Um, those are people many going to work, uh, going to services, going to their medical appointments. We partnered with Uber, um, to use their software platform, so that is the edge from using a dial or old-fashioned phone system, is, um, we purchased the, the rights to use Uber. We're on the Uber platform, so that means, um, they go on the Uber app, they can see the Uber drivers as well as LHCT, which is Lake Havasu City Transit, or LHCT Flex, which means we also run ADA-approved and certified, uh, vehicles out there that if we can't pick you up on Flex because maybe it's a late appointment, or it's a, uh, appointment too far out for us, they can just go on their phone app under Uber and order a Flex vehicle, and they can see the timeline. Average wait time is about fifteen minutes at the longest for a wheelchair vehicle, depending on the time of day. So we've backed up, when we created this service, we backed up, uh, the vehicles between Flex and Direct when we had this concept going. Big difference that we've had questions on is, uh, Lake Havasu City Transit follows the rules and guidelines from the FTA and not Uber. So, uh, questions have come to our office regarding, uh, Uber can't do that, Uber can't do this. Well, we're not, we're only using the Uber platform. We follow Lake Havasu City and FTA guidelines in ADOT, so, uh, we're only using the platform to get the calls to us and to dispatch them. Um, Direct rides are requests made by the customer using the Uber app on their mobile phone or home computer. We also do what we call, um, travel training. We will pick, uh, somebody up that has a smartphone but not as, doesn't feel comfortable using it, or is not familiar with the Uber app. We bring them in at no charge, and we bring them in more than once, and we'll train them on their phone on how to use the Uber app. And because we have the behind-the-scenes information of Uber, we can show them how the ride looks to them and what the times mean and what the wait times mean, so, um, that actually has taken off very well. Uh, we're just going to start doing that more and more for people. The, the service we provide is a shared ride service, so it's more of, uh, not a private shuttle, it's a shared ride service. That's how we can keep costs down. Uh, we did divide, uh, the city up into three zones, um, so any, if you're in zone, it's three dollars. Uh, the maximum charge you would be if you went from the south side to, say, Staples, the maximum charge would be five dollars, and that's per person, per ride each way. Um, again, all fares are paid to the Uber app, so that leaves that, um, that money not changing hands, it's just all done electronically. And again, we do all the training, we walk people through on how to put their money or their credit card or debit card on the phones if needed. Direct gave sixty-eight-hundred-and-nine rides from September, uh, twenty-twenty-one till July twenty-twenty-two. And I'm going to give you just some quick stats, um, from when we started. Uh, we started in September, we only ran six hours a day, uh, and it was due to staffing. Uh, we were still building up our staff for the, for the Direct because we still were fully staffing Flex at that time. Um, in November fifteenth, we went to twelve hours a day from six AM to six PM. Uh, June sixth, this year, uh, we went from seven AM to five, uh, PM, uh, due to shortage of drivers and gaps that we noticed. Uh, one good thing, and one of the great things actually about the new Lake Havasu City Transit being technology-driven, is we can change routes and rides instantly. So, uh, back in the days of paper routes and manually changing times, we don't have to do that, we put it in the system, and we can update in twenty-four hours and push it out. Uh, this last August, uh, we broke a trip record with sixty-four trips in one day, and, uh, we had already given seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven rides as of the twenty-second of this month, and right now, we're running two, uh, drivers, two direct drivers in the morning, and two direct drivers in the afternoon. So, uh, right now, and that's short staffed, and we're pushing sixty-plus rides a day. Um, so that's, that's a good benchmark for us. Uh, top pick locations, uh, pickup locations from September twenty-one to July twenty-two. Um, we went to Smith's two-hundred-and-three times, picked up Bashes one-hundred-and-fifty-three, Safeway one-hundred-and-seventy-three, Hampton, and this is because of ASU was using them as a, uh, residence for the students, one-hundred-and-forty-one trips. Um, from, uh, drop-off locations was ASU two-hundred-and-nineteen trips. Smith's was one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, but it was for the whole shopping center in Smith's. So we're now starting to pick up the people going to work, and we're bringing them home too as well. Um, uh, Havasu Regional Medical Center, uh, we went, um, from one-hundred-and-seventy-five trips to one-hundred-and-eighty-two trips, so a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven trips. Those were staff as well as people going for some test or procedure done at the hospital. Uh, Safeway, we went there one-hundred-and-sixty, one-hundred-and-sixty times, Bashes one-hundred-and-seventy-one trips as well. Uber has also provided a marketing campaign for our direct service. It was a rider, rider campaign that was pushed out to Uber customers. This was launched July eighteenth and was delivered to customers in the Lake Havasu City area. It was pushed out to twenty-thousand-plus people. So anybody that had an Uber app in this area, they automatically got an update, just to remind them that Lake Havasu City has, has their service on the Uber app. Um, we also did a mailer, um, for our fixed route when we were trying to get our fixed route, kind of to segue into that as well during about the same time. Uh, we did a mailer for, um, up Swanson and Magnolia, just to remind people we have fixed routes going to the store. So we're going out, we're trying to get more public-facing, and we'll continue to do that as time goes on. You can see, this is one of the tools that we use from Uber, and, um, this is something that shows all the trends, and this is what we look at, and the darker trends, the darker, uh, lines obviously are higher volume. And, uh, first trips that you see up on the left, just identify this, these are first-time riders, so these are people that have ridden direct for the first time. Unique riders are at seven-hundred-and-ninety-one, these are direct riders that use us all the time. So if we, we're probably looking at fifteen, almost sixteen-hundred people that are using, have used Direct since we started, and seven-hundred-and-ninety-one, seven-hundred about average, use us almost daily right now. Uh, trip end locations, I spoke about that too. You can kind of see the layout of the, of the dark pink. Um, those are Safeway, uh, the hospital, Mesquite for all the medical services on Mesquite, and Smith's, and ASU, and Bashes on the south side is down on the lower right. Okay, Bridge, our Bridge fixed route, um, is our fixed route, as you know, we've been talking about that. Um, our first pilot route launched February twenty-eighth, and it ran through July first. Uh, we did provide no fare rides or free rides to two-hundred-and-fifty-nine customers during this time. Um, this was part of our transit study and transit plan, because remember, the study was done in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, so there was a whole different demographic here at that time, and there was a need for a, a route picking up people from the hotel areas and taking them to the shopping centers. Uh, when we decided to test that route out, it obviously didn't, uh, wasn't successful in bringing those because it's a different demographic now, and most people in that area have vehicles, or they're travelers staying at the hotel with their own vehicles. Um, again, there was a mass mailer sent to five-hundred, uh, homes in that gray route vicinity. Um, we are planning our second pilot route, and this will be the express to the shops, and it will begin service in fall of, uh, twenty-twenty-two of this year. Um, we actually have a new electronic fare that'll be taken through a new app called Transit Token, and that'll be something that we'll put out, we'll have instructions. Uh, we have actually online videos as well for Direct on how to, uh, load your Uber app, we'll have the same thing for Transit Token as well. A del fare, uh, per rider is a dollar twenty-five, seniors and students are seventy-five cents to ride. Uh, here's our draft of the pilot route, and this is pilot route number two, and we will start in Pima Wash, uh, that's where we kind of made our temporary, uh, bus, uh, central location. It's a good location for us for people to come in and, and easily gain access. So from here, we'll go directly to Walmart, uh, we'll stop in Walmart, and then we'll come down to the traffic circle in front of the theaters, and then from that point, we'll head straight back into town. Uh, we should be able to complete their route within less than an hour, an hour's time, so with gas prices now, I'm sure that'll probably take off. Uh, one way people can get down in to get the bus if they don't have cars is they could take Direct in to the hub for three dollars or five dollars, depending what part they're coming into town, and pick up that bus to go shopping and then come back. Uh, we have a new website, uh, just got launched, um, pretty recent, we have a new look. Uh, we provide additional information, options for the public to ask questions and, and comment. Uh, we are working on transit updates, we're, uh, putting in there what's happening, and we also have now, you can ask a question through email, and we'll get a response, uh, within the next, you know, business day usually from it. Uh, transit challenges we had, we were currently short, uh, three drivers up until this last week. We were successful in hiring, uh, three, um, good candidates, good drivers, and hats off to our HR department and working, uh, relentlessly trying to get us drivers. Um, you know, we aren't the only department in the city struggling, but it's very unique to get drivers of very, it's a very unique position. Driver requirements are probably tram, transit limits qualified candidates, so we really have to have somebody that has experience driving in larger vehicles and, um, able to maneuver backing up, turning around and, and such, so that's what we look for. And a follow-up, um, there is a difference between public transit service and school bus service. Uh, school bus transportation is actually funded by the state who gets funding from the federal government. There are requirements, actually more requirements for school bus transit drivers than there are for public transit drivers. And, uh, if the comparable, say if we were a metropolitan area, a transit driver for a big fixed route, say in the valley in Phoenix, um, they have to meet special requirements from the federal government, but they're completely different than the requirements they are for, um, being a school bus driver. Uh, all basically, even down to the way the school buses are built, they're built completely different for crash safety than a transit bus. So the school bus driver has to be more in tune with the vehicle and more in tune with the kids. Our, our drivers do not need a commercial license, uh, to, uh, provide transit services, meaning they do not have to have a Class C license and a bus, uh, bus passenger endorsement. School bus drivers have the same thing, but they have a school bus endorsement. So in reality, we can't really exchange drivers at all because funding doesn't allow it. Uh, the federal, uh, guidelines from the FTA state that, uh, we cannot offer, um, systems like ours can't offer any type of public, assist public service to school bus services if those schools are already receiving funds for the same thing. So, um, there was a study that I, uh, looked at that, um, uh, Councilman, Councilmember Campbell submitted, uh, it was a study done in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, it's just basically the same things are in play right now, but when you drill down into it, um, there are changes that have changed since nineteen ninety-nine, and requirements cannot be split and funding can't be split. Plus, that study was done on, uh, communities that were not urbanized. So Lake Havasu City, uh, in twenty-ten became a urbanized community, small urban identifier, and that's why we were able to receive direct funds from FTA. That study also stated that you could basically either have school buses take public, or you could have the public take school kids, and that's for those smaller communities at twenty or thirty thousand people that couldn't afford to have both systems in place. So we did a lot of research on that, we did meet with the school district, uh, recently, uh, Jesse and myself and... meet with the school district, uh, recently, uh, Jesse, myself and met with leadership and, uh, we had talked about what we can do, what we can partner down the road with. And one of the things we came up with is currently we, our direct service takes, um, students to the high school and to Thunderbolt. So I worked with, uh, Bobby Kearns, who's in charge of the school buses and we came up with a location, a safer location in the front of the school to pick up and drop off kids at the high school. And we're in the back where the school buses come and we have a marked area back there now, uh, that says Lake Havasu City Transit. And so we're telling the kids, educating them, when you call in, make sure you bet toward the back of the high school because the phone geocodes where they're located. Otherwise we'll be looking for them in the front. So this means that our, um, the city transit buses do not have to enter school property. We'll just come on the street up and behind and it's a bigger area, wider. And the only thing, I mean, there's a lot of parents back there, but the buses are back there mainly. And we're taking some of that same area just to pick up and drop off students. And that does it for my presentations. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cypress for, uh, that thorough presentation of our, of our transit system. So, uh, what we have is an innovative, uh, approach to transit. So we're taking and meeting our citizens that use it, uh, where they're at. Uh, we do have ridership and, uh, as we heard from, uh, a citizen that not only drives folks, uh, uh, former and currently, uh, there is a huge need out there and we were able to create mobility at a time when we didn't have, uh, access to the federal funds or, or additional grant dollars, uh, which served, uh, a purpose, but we were able to expand it to offer all these other, other items. Uh, and, uh, the, the service that we'll do with express out to the shops in that area, um, hopefully will be something that, um, our citizens will, will be able to use, uh, going forward. Uh, so thank you for that and thank you for taking the time to, uh, meet with, uh, the school district, uh, to see what, uh, potential partnerships are there. Um, I also had some conversations with the school district and they also, um, are working on some programs to use the technology as well, uh, where anyone that has, uh, an issue from a financial position, uh, and can't maybe afford the ride that they're working on ways to get donated funds into the Uber app where they can pay and, and get folks there. So I believe you helped coordinate that, uh, that effort for them. So thank you. Uh, are there additional comments, questions, thoughts from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell.
Question. Thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you for following through everybody and speaking with the school districts. I know this is, um, uh, new way of looking at how we're going to transport our citizens here in Lake Havasu City and within our school district. And I was just wondering if you followed through on the new 2022 July 11th, um, policies that was put into place by, uh, Governor Ducey, which removes restrictions on types of vehicles schools can use, um, to transport students. It also removes the federal laws, uh, requires traditional school bus drivers to hold commercial drivers license will typically requires one to two months training and courses of fees. He's lifted those. There's also additional funding through that. And there has been some pilot programs that have, that have proven, obviously in a metropolitan area that we are using both mechanisms. It sounds like you're doing that by putting, allowing children to know, kind of like if I'm in a hotel and I just want to know where the Uber drivers are going to be and where's the taxi driver's going to go be. That's very knowledgeable along with educating, um, the students on and the parents on how to fund it, put the money on your credit card, all of that kind of stuff to make sure we are trying our best to move all the citizens of Lake Havasu City, including our children. And, um, at 2:30 in the afternoon, I find that that's the most difficult time for parents to try and get their children. They're usually knee deep in the middle of school. I know my kids, uh, they, they share rides with my grandchildren, I mean, share rides with other people. My husband and I pick them up. We gotta do what we have to do. So I don't want those conversations to end anytime soon. I want to keep on evolving into how we can help our families and move them forward. They're out of school a lot too. So that means we can, during the Christmas times and Christmas breaks, I think the long routes back and forth to the shops of Havasu or wherever we need to do, I just want us to continue to be open-minded and creative and see how we can continue to move Lake Havasu City the best that we can. Uh, the gentleman out here, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but Robert, I, he, uh, was explaining about the high cost to our tax dollars this is. And again, maybe not to Lake Havasu City, but I'm a federal tax dollar payer and I'm a state and a federal and yeah, I'm always paying taxes. And again, I don't want to see my taxes wasted or anybody else. So again, by the numbers, I'm impressed by the numbers. Um, I was skeptical like many. Um, it's probably here to stay. Let's just keep doing good work. Let's keep getting information out to the schools, please, and, um, the children and let's keep, help these parents as much as possible. Also like this new, let's go for pilot program number three, continuing maybe those conversations with the schools to see how many kids are really in dire need at 2:30 that are left outside because that happens too, because our school programs, after school programs have sold out in six minutes. So I know for a fact that when my mother was a full-time single mom, full-time employee, single mom, it was not uncommon for me to walk miles and miles or ride my motorcycle or whichever to get where I need to do, which is okay, but I do agree with, uh, the 115, 120 plus the safety of our children walking, um, is completely different today than it was when I was young and I had the opportunity to ride my motorcycle to school and that's what I got to do. And we don't get to do that now because there isn't all these motorcycle tracks all over Lake Havasu City that we can get there via motorcycle. So again, let's keep working together. Let's keep up the good work and thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, have you noticed an increase in students using the fixed route? Since they don't have a school busing? I'm sorry, not the fixed, I'm sorry, the direct route.
Yes.
You have. And then, um, when the conversations that you were having with the school district, were you able to look at what their past bus routes were and where they were picking up kids and where it was maybe, what I, what I think I'm going at is we needed fixed route and is there a way to look at what the fixed routes were with the s- school buses to see if we could use a fixed route and utilize it that way? Were you able to look at their routes that they used?
Um, well, I'll tell you what, uh, what I found out and verified is I know that within a mile and a half of the high school, they don't transport, you can't get a bus and the same for the, for Thunderbolt. I'm not sure on the mileage, it goes a mile, a mile and a half. And, um, I can tell you that during hat days, they did have a lot of bus stops in that area, but that's only, that was like one or two routes, but they had to come out of a hub. So that ride, they did have a bus stop in front of the high school, but that was before the high school had their own bus system. So, um, there's all kinds of ideas and thank you, uh, Councilmember Campbell on that, that we have in queue to look at. We just have to, you know, again, take positive, uh, steps so we don't have to go backwards. And it's a learning process for us. Like I said, we've got a lot of levers we're pulling and I have, you know, support of this council and, and city management and, and it's, um, I think it's a good thing. We had a great meeting with, uh, uh, Dr. Stone and her staff and we connected. And I said, hey, this is the beginning, you know, and who knows what we can bring. And they were, we did discuss, um, like Mayor said, about something down the road, future, not too far out. So, I mean, so we're already changing it. So things happen, you know, small, then they change and they change. So, um, but yeah, I, I'm, I can, you know, we're looking at all kinds of stuff, you know, uh, you know, my kids grew up here too, so I know the challenges. And, um, yeah, I know. I, my son one day walked all the way home from the high school in the heat and I thought, wow. But being here, being here for a long time, I know, we know what the needs are of the community. So different than people coming in from outside and we've been here. I've been here 26 years, so I've grown into the community. So this is me giving back, helping bring this. Jeanette and I, that's our passion is to bring public transit to everybody in the community. So.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, uh, you know, I've been involved with, with this system since we first, uh, did the, uh, the study. Uh, great job. Uh, it's definitely obviously needed here in the city. Uh, for those that don't need transit, um, God bless you, uh, that you don't need transit. Um, but we do have a large section of our most vulnerable people here in town that need transit. They need help getting from point A to point B. Um, Patrick knows my relationship with some of the special needs people here, uh, that we have in town. Um, they call me and, uh, if they're having a problem with their Uber app and, and asking me, uh, how to fix it, um, Jeanette and, and Patrick have sat down with them, uh, quite often to help them and I appreciate that. Uh, but we do have special needs people, um, that they can't drive. They have to have some sort of transit. Um, and this is a way for us to be able to do that, uh, without raising any tax dollars. You know, we're, we're spending the same amount of money that we spent when we had Just Havasu Mobility. Uh, when it comes to using these buses for school buses to transport children, uh, I'm adamantly opposed to it. Uh, I don't think it's a good idea. Um, on a superficial level, it sounds like a great idea. We have transit, they have buses. Um, but most people don't know the level of safety requirements of a school bus system. Uh, most people here know my background. I was a highway patrolman and one of the jobs I had is I supervised the school bus safety program. We regulated school buses and we regulated school bus drivers. School buses are a unique transportation system and these rules have been drilled, developed over many years to ensure the safety of our children. School buses are yellow for a reason. The reason that research has showed that yellow is seen even in inclement weather. That's why it's a federal law that all school buses have to be painted yellow for the safety of our children. The black stripes you see on the sides of buses, they're not there for decoration. One of their made out of, uh, uh, special steel, they're called rubber rails. Uh, the bottom one, that's right at floor level of a bus. The one that you see in the middle, that's where the seat level is for the kids. The one at the top, that's the seat back. Those are there for a reason. God forbid our first responders have to cut into a school bus, but those markings show where that our first responders can or should not cut into a school bus for the safety of our kids. School buses have flashing lights on them. If they're alternating flashing lights or they have a stop sign that comes out or an extending arm, Arizona revised statutes say that the motoring public has to stop for those buses so that the schools can get, or the children can get on the bus and off the bus, uh, safely. One half to one third of all injuries and deaths relating to students and school buses is when they're trying to get on and off the bus. They're running to catch the bus because they're late or they're running to get home when they've got off the bus because they have things that they want to get done. Uh, there's strict guidelines to be a, a school bus driver. They have to be certified by the state of Arizona and DPS and our school district works very close with DPS to make sure that all school bus drivers are properly licensed to transport children. School buses must be inspected and certified by Arizona DPS prior to be put into, into service to ensure that they're safe for our children. The reason these safety standards have been put into places to protect our children, the most vulnerable of the people in our society. Municipal buses don't have these regulations and using them to transport our children is a bad idea and a liability that I don't think the city should take on. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lane. Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, sorry. I, I, so I, I just wrote down a whole list of questions here and they're very kind of, um, operational kind of deal because I'm interested in this. Is there a federal guideline on why you only allow nine-year-old kids on the bus or not? Is there something like where'd you come, where did we come up with the nine years?
That's, that is, um, we did research on other agencies, larger agencies. Um, we, uh, partner a lot with, uh, Mountain Line and Flagstaff because they started small with us and we did recommendation for them. Yum was the same. So we, in, um, Bullhead and Kingman. So we looked at all of them in the area and decided that was, and that's about the right age too. And even in, in busy areas where they have larger buses like Bullhead, they rarely get any kids that young riding them.
Right. Just wondering if the, the reasoning behind that. Uh, your operational times, are you planning to expand them at any time?
Yes. Um, we are looking to go back to expanded hours on direct once we get our drivers up and certified and fully trained. And some of those will be added to the fixed route once we launch that in fall. So we are going to expand hours back.
Well, that leads me to the very next bullet point. How many drivers do you need and do you have everything you need right now? Like you, you said you have nine drivers, I believe.
Yeah, well, it'll get us back. The, once we have in, that we just hired will bring us back to our regular status.
Kind of like full build out?
Mm-hmm. And that'll let us see, okay, where, where are the gaps in service and where are, um, you know, what's needed as well to, to go to the next level.
Okay. Uh, I had another question. How much goes to Uber? What does Uber's cut for us using their platform?
Yeah.
Annual fee.
Ms. Buckley, yes.
Sorry, we signed a contract where we pay them an annual fee per car.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Moses, that contract did come before.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a difference in costs when we put out the direct transport versus paratransit transport? Like, uh, it's a much more expensive vehicle, right?
Yeah, the, the flex rides are just like Havasu Mobility, they're probably three times more than direct.
Yeah.
Um, just to real quick on our, when we had Havasu Mobility, um, the fare was $2. The average rate one way was $48 per ride. So that was that money we were able to take and now look what we're doing with the same amount of money. So it's managing your, your funds the right way.
Are we using paratransit transport in place of direct sometimes?
We will, like I said, in direct, we do have the paratransit as an option for them.
Okay.
But, uh, with a decrease in ridership and cancellations, uh, some days we just end it early. And if somebody calls in and wants service that day, then we just refer them back to direct flex where they have, they can probably get a ride that day.
All righty. How did you decide on the fares?
We had the, the market analysis, the finance department did a market analysis and came back. We did and gave it back to them.
Okay. And is there anything that, uh, stops us from not charging a kid to get to high school?
It's up to the, you know, it's up to the city manager and council.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to look at costs, um, especially with fuel right now. And I know that's affecting everybody, but our fuel, just like everybody else has, you know, quadrupled in usage. So, um, if we were to actually look at a ride now, it's, it's like crazy high.
Right.
But we're trying to build it. That's why down the road we want to eventually go to EV vehicles, electric vehicles, but those are still five or six years out before you can even see a transit vehicle like that. But, um, you know, we're feeling impact with fuel costs too. And I think that's why our direct is starting to grow. And, uh, we take the same, we probably take 200 people a week to work now at various times throughout the day, to all over the city through direct. So, um, we try to limit our hours because, uh, six o'clock's kind of the end, the end time for us for hours because we're FTA, uh, funded. So we have to follow safety sensitive guidelines. So meaning that if there's an accident and, uh, we have to follow guidelines and somebody has to be available to go and assess the accident. And that operator, driver needs to go either have a drug or, or alcohol screening depending on the severity of accident. So somebody's got to go out there and document that and then make that assessment on scene. Uh, so those are federal requirements. That's why it's as small as we are, it's hard to run them late at night because it's, that's usually somebody's on call, that's me to come out and assess it. So, um, not that I wouldn't do it, but it's just, it's, we're not there yet, you know, to expand to like 12 hours a day. Um, it's just not, it's not right yet. We have to get our people back in, start running it, crunch our numbers. Direct's going to go back up as soon as, even more as soon as we get more drivers. So because of the fuel cost, it's hard to get a good num, a good snapshot because it's always fluctuating. Back when I did the study in 2015 to 2018, it was easy for me to look at the numbers versus cost of operating versus wages and say the rides today are going to cost $48 apiece. And then as one person cancels, that ride goes up. So rather than spend all that funds on one type of service, that's where I decided to go with the transit plan and, and use those funds, um, in the correct way.
But, but you say you are taking kids to school?
Mm-hmm. We take them to high school.
To, to the high school, I'm sure mostly.
And Thunderbolt.
And Thunderbolt.
And teachers, staff. Uh, we are going to put out, once we get our drivers back up for direct, we are going to work with, um, the district office and put something out for their staff that if their car breaks down or it's in the shop, that they can call direct and get into school and get out of school too, or go back and forth. So.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses. Are there any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I do have a question on something that Patrick just said. We are taking kids back and forth to school. Is that a contract that we have with the school district? Or is that the parents are paying for it separately as, as parents?
Yeah, the, the parents are paying for it on their Uber app. If it's a high schooler, they probably have the app on their phone, so they're just calling in the ride from the high school.
And they're paying anywhere from $3 to $5?
Yeah, if they're in zone, it's only $3, and if it's, it's out of zone, it's $5.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please, yeah, just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to start with Alfred De La Rosa. Are you sure? Okay. Sorry, I, I forgot I moved you based on your item.
It's Robert Fisher again. So you've talked a lot about the routes and the costs to ride the bus and all that kind of stuff. But one of the things I just don't quite understand, what I heard you say a few minutes ago, each rider, the cost to the system is $48 for a ride. Is that correct?
I was referring to our paratransit service we had, Havasu Mobility. We started that in 2014. And even taking 1,000 rides a month, we were averaging $48 a ride. So we decided to utilize that funding in a different way and still provide paratransit, but bring other public transit services to the community. So up until the gas crunch recently, we were, we were getting pretty close. It was coming down.
So it's actually more than that now?
It's probably, direct is, is probably breaking even right now with fuel costs.
Even what?
Even with the cost of rides. The, one thing about public transit, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a generator, a money generator for the city, it's a service for the city. So if anything we get back for the community goes to keep the operations going.
Sure seems like a waste of tax dollars to say that we're getting this money for free from the federal government's disingenuous, because the federal government's willing to spend about a buck 60 for every dollar they tax us for, and that's why we're so far in debt. And so I think saying it's free money is, is not really free. But to think we're spending $48 or whatever for someone to, could take a taxi for $10, it seems like kind of a burden to put on the people who, who pay the taxes. I, I just don't think it's an economical thing to be doing in competition with systems that are already in, in place that provide that service.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher, that's, that $48 that Mr. Cypress is referring to is paratransit. So those are, are folks that are ADA or maybe in a wheelchair, going to their doctor's appointment, have no other means of, of ridership. It's the direct that is, is breaking even. Costs are, are the same as, as the revenue that's brought in. Those are the folks that might be going to, to high school, might be going to the grocery store, so on and so forth, through that service. So, there is citizens that have a need to get to their medical facilities and, and medical appointments that the city provides those types of transit services for. Mr. De La Rosa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Cypress.
Sure.
Yeah, how long have you been doing this for the city?
Since 2015.
Since 2015, so seven years, a little over seven years. Okay, and I, I remember moving into this town, we had the hat. Okay, were, were you involved in that also?
No, I came in after that.
Okay, so in seven and a half years, we're still trying to get a public transportation system here for the citizens of Lake Havasu, right?
Well, actually, we started in 2018 with the study. So it's been, we've been working on this for quite a number of years. Began actually 2018, we started looking at a study.
Okay, and, and we're still doing studies and trying to get it together?
No, study was signed off and adopted by the city council in January of 2020.
Okay, all right, and you stated, I think you stated you had 200 rides in a week? Is that what you were stating? That the direct line did 200 rides?
No, the bridge did in a, bridge was having low numbers, there were like 268, but it was on the pilot route. But currently, right now, direct is the high-volume or micro-transit. So that's the one that is kind of a demand response. So that's the one that goes to your house and picks you up and takes you to wherever you want to go.
And what are those working hours?
Right now, those hours are 7 to 5.
7 to 5?
Monday through Friday.
Okay. You know, I've been living here for about 12 years. I've been coming to Lake Havasu since early 90s. I love this town. I agree somewhat with Mr., this gentleman right here in that the present systems that we do have that move the city, which is the shuttles, in, in my experience, they run 24/7. They'll move 200 people, one shuttle company will move 200 people every day, taking them back and forth to work. We're a retirement resort town. That means that we have hotels, we have restaurants, we have bars, and we have the people that are working in those places. And a lot of them, for whatever reason, don't have transportation. You know, they may have come from a city or someplace where they had it, they didn't need a car, they had public transportation. But the shuttles in this town, they move these people, they move the city. At 2:30 in the morning, when there's a domestic violence caller, and who does the Lake Havasu PD call to take them to the hotel? They call the shuttle company, because there is no other public transportation that they can call. The same thing in the evenings with Havasu Regional Hospital. They'll, the nurses and stuff, they'll call the shuttle at 9:30 when the person got released. And sometimes the officer or the nurse, they'll actually pay, now that it's only 10, it's $10. I think, and I would hope that the council and this would, and Mr. Cypress would find a way to help the shuttle companies in the town move the ci, the citizens. I'm sure, I mean, they help out avoid so many DUIs just picking up people from the bars. They pick up people, take them, I mean, spring break, they're using the shuttles. You know, I know that it seems like we have to have a fixed route because of the money that we're getting. We have to abide by certain regulations and rules. But I can't see why, with all the talent we have here in this town, that they cannot, you can't come up with something, a plan or something, make a hybrid of something to help the shuttle companies here in town, because they do move the city. And that's really all I'd like to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yeah, please. Yeah, in 2014, we did look at partnerships with the shuttle companies. And unfortunately, some of the insurance requirements that were required from some of the federal dollars didn't warrant that and allow that to happen. But certainly, you, you're hitting the nail on the head. Our shuttle companies throughout our community do move folks around. Transit just augments what the services are that they're available and ensures that every citizen has access to, to transport. Uh, sir?
My name's Emiliano Torres. And as I had mentioned before, I'm a Catholic school kid. And on any of those days that we went to school, the, the city buses were full of Catholic school kids going to and from school utilizing public transportation. A question for you, sir. Why weren't bicycle racks incorporated into any of the buses? This town seems like it would be perfect for bicycles. It's a downhill for most of us, from where we live to where we want to go. But it is uphill and a real climb to get back home, that if we had a, a rack, I, I would happily ride down on my bike if I knew I had a ride on the bus back up. And not only were the buses our transportation for school, Monday through Friday, it was freedom on Saturday. We didn't have to beg our parents to take us to the movies. We would coordinate between ourselves to meet each other at the bus stop so that we could go to the theater by ourselves, or to cause havoc at the local mall. But that's what we did. So, public transportation can work. The city's growing. It may be at the point where it can make a go of it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Torres. Yeah, Mr. Cypress, do you want to address the bike rack?
Yeah, we do have plans to, we already have identified the bike racks we're going to put on the buses. We just, we got to get the routes finalized before, just for your information, bike racks are about $4,000. So, before we go buy one and put one on, I want to make sure that we have a route that's going to, to actually, we looked at having bike lockers and bike areas. So that's all in our plan. Again, being that we've only been doing it for 12 months, there's many, many things left to the plan that we haven't even addressed yet, that are in queue. And bike racks, storage lockers, places to lock them up, that's all in our plan.
Yeah, great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Hi, me again. Michelle Young. 20 years ago, we transported probably 30 to 40 people per bus on shift. And we had a fleet of 23 buses, probably 18 out at a time. There, it began once and grew to that. It's going to begin again and continue to grow. I really appreciate your remarks on the school busing. Things that I did not know. I just want you guys to know that the children that we do transport, we take them to their homes. I personally make sure they get in their door. I don't care if they're high school or not. I have two girls. Don't like the school system, so I homeschooled. But I would not allow either of my children to take any shuttle service in this town. They are 22 and going on 17 today, and I still will not allow them to take shuttle system. Simply because I don't know the drivers. We are fully background-checked and vetted. Not saying that it's not, you know, don't take the other shuttle services. I recommend the other shuttle services all the time. I just wouldn't recommend it for younger people. You know what I'm saying? There are plenty of people in this town that need rides, that both sides can be accommodated. I just, it doesn't have to be one or the other. You know, we, we can all make a go of it. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, it's me, Bonnie Toy again. Hello, I just wanted to say, I really do appreciate that you guys are doing a transit system in Lake Havasu City. And I did take the opportunity and ride the fixed bus route when you had that running in service and thought that it was frankly a useless fixed route, because it went from grocery store to grocery store to a couple of hotels and the college. And the Pima Wash transit hub, I've, I'm understanding what I was just presented on the screen up there, that you going to do the next fixed route from the Pima Wash to the shops. And you said that if people can't just drive their car to the Pima Wash and get the bus, that they could take the direct route and then take the direct route to the Pima Wash route and go from the Pima Wash route directly to the shops. Wouldn't they just be able to take the direct route to the shops? Or is that not in the direct route service area? And then when you talked about that you cannot help the schools because of some really weird federal stuff, but aren't you actually getting federal money? That part I didn't understand at all. Or if the rides are, I mean, the federal funds for the whole transit system is being paid for by the federal system, then what, what are you worried about all the money for? That, I, I just guess I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
And I think that, I'm hoping actually that you would consider a couple extra stops before the shops, that maybe you might find areas of where people actually need the bus to go from. So like maybe Bashes on what people call the South Side Bashes? Because we used to have a North, Earth, never mind. So maybe have a bus stop at the Bashes for people in that area who might need a bus to go to the shops. And then maybe another stop downtown and another stop close to Palaverdy on the North Side that could, you know, might be able to use it like at Food City. Just a thought. And this whole thing here isn't about approval of anything, correct?
Correct, yeah, we're, we're having an update and discussion about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so to answer some of your, your questions, this is a hybrid system that is going to continue to grow. So different stops will, will be added or removed based on, on the availability. So right now, as Mr. Cypress presented earlier, if someone is looking to go out to the shops, they would take the direct route to the transit station and there, get onto the bus, they'll take them out to the shops, return back to the transit station, get back into direct and go, go home. That's to create the most efficient use of the vehicle. So basically, the three zones of our community are set up so that those direct vehicles are in those zones and they can get to the citizens in a, in a pretty orderly and quick fashion. So this is an ever-changing system. You can see how many times it's changed since 2018. We'll continue to do that, but we're trying to find that, that equilibrium or that medium of where there's not additional local tax dollars being augmented to the federal tax dollars that are, are actually working for the system. So we're trying to find what that hybrid is and still move our community around.
One more question about the paying for the routes, paying for the fixed route. I mean, obviously, if you're using the direct route, you're using Uber app. For somebody who doesn't like using apps at all, or how are they supposed to pay for rides if they don't have a smartphone or apps?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Cypress or Ms. Buckley want to address that?
We actually will have the new app, but we're also going to sell tickets to fill up the gap for the residents that do not have access to a smartphone. And those tickets will be presented to the bus driver when you get in. So, and we're still currently looking for locations in the community partner with, that they can purchase tickets at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
Tim Murray, who provides oversight to this program? Is it the city manager? So who's, who's?
Yeah, so there's a lot of people that are the boss here, if you are.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's a complicated program to begin with, but there needs to be some one individual that's providing oversight, right?
Yes.
Is it working, is it not working? What can we do here?
Yeah, so we have ADOT and the federal partners that are, are oversight from that financing standpoint. But from the city management, Mr. Cypress is the, the transit manager. Mr. Kozlowski is, Patrick's supervisor, he's in the, the back with the team. And then Mr. Kozlowski reports to.
So there is somebody watching?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Lots of moving pieces. All right, would anyone else like to address this before we close the public hearing? All right, we will close the public hearing on this item. Is there any additional questions, comments, or thoughts from members of the council?
I did get that, but you tried again.
Sorry.
Always listening.
Yes. Did Councilmember Moses have a?
David, go for it.
Okay, Councilmember Elaine?
I just, something I wanted to bring up earlier, and it was about the gentleman saying that he's never seen the buses. And I think that's awesome, and that's hats off to you guys, because they've been out, they've been out there for a year. And they've been doing this for a year. And so if you, if you look, you'll see them. They're at all the grocery stores all the time. They're not great big giant articulated buses driving, you see, they're just vans. And they are helping those people that are the most vulnerable in our community. And I think they're doing an awesome job. So I look forward to seeing how this progresses into the future. And we don't need to replace the local shuttle services, we need to work in conjunction with them. So there is a lot of work for them to do after the hours. But when it comes to needing those people that are in those super-big wheelchairs and they need extra help, that's what we're there for, to help our most vulnerable and to help our other businesses so that we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses, did you have a comment?
Yeah, well, actually, one was for David. When you were talking earlier, you expect us Um, when you were talking earlier, you expect us to believe that somebody called you to help with a technology app on their phone?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just because I'm the oldest one up here.
I won't even say it, never mind.
No.
But yes, I do.
Yeah, um, I, this service uh fulfills a tremendous need for the people who need it the most in our community. Um, and so I I applaud your efforts for trying to meet everywhere, everyone where they're at. Um, it's one of the hardest things in the world to do. And uh I think you're, I I think we're, I think we're doing a good job. Um, I I really like the direction we're headed. I really like the micro, the hybrid system that you've created, Patrick. I love, uh, can't wait to see it at its full development. Then my question is for the rest of the council is um why couldn't we do a a lesser fare for those kids who need to get to school? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Davidson?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Moses, I I guess that we would need additional resources. So the the fee is in place, not necessarily to capture the the uh the cost of the service, um, but to to find that middle ground in terms of a demand and our ability to do it. So if we had pre-service for for direct routes for any, for anybody that was under the age of eighteen, for example, we would need a lot more drivers and a lot more uh, a lot more vehicles. And it would also impact the the amount of users that are already using the system, right? So those are relying on it to get to work in in the morning. So just one of those things to to consider.
I I agree. Um, and and I've talked with people at the school board, uh, it's not school board, but school district too. And the number of people needing rides to the high school isn't that great. It's not, there's not a whole lot of them. But there are a few. And I think that if we could help out those people, um, yes, I I I understand as soon as you make something, you know, affordable, that it'll be, get used more. Um, but I, kids getting to school is one of the most important, uh, one of the biggest predictors of success as a young adult. And um I just think uh if we can help out in that way, I'd be, I'd be uh open to looking at what that, seeing what that looks like.
Yeah. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
Um, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Moses, uh, so we met with Dr. Stone, uh, Mike Murray, and then uh gentleman Patrick that works for the the head of their bus program.
Yes.
Uh, is the name is?
Mr. Kearns.
Mr. Kearns, yeah, fantastic gentleman and and had some really, really good conversations. Uh, more so than that, we meet once a quarter. City, uh, um, city and and myself, uh, city attorney, we sit down with uh Dr. Stone and Mike Murray and and others. Sometimes uh there there's members of the school board that attend those meetings. And we have very robust conversations in terms of partnerships, how we can help each other out. And so that occurs on an ongoing basis. Last time we met, there was a reminder to thank the city for some work we did about three years ago, uh, back behind the high school to transform back by the tennis courts to allow flow for uh the drop off of of their uh of their, the students uh back in, back in that area. Um, we've assisted them with uh not just the high school, but the uh Thunderbolt and the elementary schools with signage and flow and enforcement. Uh, we've had uh officers that are out there, you know, that making sure that the the traffic uh flows smoothly. Anybody that's dropping off kids or picking up kids knows that it's not an easy task. Um, our officers are out there, um, uh, assisting the best way they can to alleviate any concerns that that are out there. So we work very closely with them on summer camp, after-school programs. If they, if we, if the school district needs something from the city, I will guarantee you that we're going to hear from it, either at those quarterly meetings or or other communications that that come through. Um, in addition to that, we asked, what can we do right now to to assist with uh with uh uh your ability to get kids back and forth to school? And the the response that they had, they were very excited about uh Mr. Cypress's uh presentation earlier about uh um being able to have, purchase codes that they can type into the uh, to the app to get to get the students back and forth. Maybe those that have a um, um, you know, financial, uh, don't have the fin- financial means to pay for that on an ongoing basis. So those are just some examples of how we 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 continue to work with the school district and and one of the things, uh, one of the paths forward with regards to that that type of service.
So and 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 I agree, I I think we do a fantastic job of filling as many holes as we can and and helping out in any way we can. I I think our city's always had that uh MO. Um, the, my my point would be that it's already three dollars. It's already pretty low. So if everybody's not already using it, right? Like if it's not already overtaxed, overburdened, the system isn't already overburdened, I don't think changing it from three dollars to one dollar is really going to take our riders or the amount of riders that we serve from thirty or, I I don't know how many said we take to the high school or not. I don't think it's going to take it from ten to a thousand. I think it'll take it from ten to twelve. And now we just don't cost our kids six dollars to get to school every day.
Yeah, Mr. Councilmember Moses, if I may be, uh, through the conversations that uh our team have had with the school district personnel, they are creating their business account for the for the Uber app. So if someone finds themselves in a financial situation, uh, they can assist them to ensure that they can get rides um and Uber on our system or other other platforms that Uber rides. Uh, Mr. Michael Mersing is actually leading a golf tournament on October sixteenth. It's going to be the first initial funds to raise for it. So these will be donated funds administered by the school district. Uh, then, and they will identify students or families that find themselves in this position that need uh need financial assistance to help. So I would uh err on the side of let's see how that works. Uh, let's see what uh what that works with uh this system that was started with our team. Uh, see if that fulfills the need uh that our families are having or um could have. And and if not, then when we review the fee schedule, we can take a look at at what that looks like.
Okay, absolutely, I think that's a great approach. Thanks for bringing that.
All right, any other comments or thoughts before we end our discussion on this item? All right, Mr. Cypress and Ms. Buckley, thank you for for all that you do. Uh, and thank you for using uh your innovation and ingenuity to really build the system that uh kind of meets all of these different balances.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item nine of our uh agenda. And uh do we have any current council committee reports?
Um, just that the PED's been, uh, there was a cost of living kind of index study that came out a couple of months ago that was really interesting. If anybody wants to check it out, uh, I'm sure they'll give you a copy. And then uh we've, um, we, they've been working tirelessly on that housing study, the, you know, affordable housing study. So looking forward to the fruits of that labor here shortly.
Thank you for the update. Any additional council committee reports? I will just mention that uh Councilmember Coke was not with us in person today. She was attending virtually. Uh, she is the local recipient of the Mercy Award, which is um a really prestigious award that is given uh to LifePoint Hospital employees. And she's on her way to Nashville to compete possibly for uh LifePoint Systemwide's uh award. So we congratulate Councilmember Coke on on that award. Uh, future agenda items are Tuesday, September, excuse me, uh, future meetings are on Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six P M. We'll have a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, six P M, we will also have a regular meeting. Item eleven, are there any future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm I'm not sure how to address this, but we did have a lot of folks today show up with um concerns with the event that's being promoted with the C V B. Is there any way that we can have a conversation or discussion on how we, what what things are promoted with the C V B, what our agreement with them is? At least have a discussion on what that looks like?
Yeah, sure, uh, if we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to review uh the Go Lake Havasu contract? All right, any additional future discussion items? All right, item twelve, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned, thank you for being here, uh, be kind, and we'll see you next time.